Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Testing.
Welcome, everyone. It is June 27th and I'd like to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order. It's lovely to see so many people here today. That makes it much more fun. I want to note for the record that all council members are present in the NatU Hill Room. And that also makes me very happy. We are going to do the adoption of the agenda now. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's agenda?
I would just like to make a correction if I might. I know that we included the Extension Office in Department Updates because for some reason, something got messed up at the agenda. But there are those who think if we leave it under that part, we couldn't voice our opinion to move forward, to support them in moving forward. Not voting on appropriation, we're not voting on contract, we don't have a contract. But just to support them moving forward. I believe we could do that under Department Updates. Some people think we can't, so I just want to make that clear.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, I know, I'm very rarely quash anybody from making comments or supporting or commenting.
Or motion, if a person can make a motion from
Sure. Anybody can make a motion anytime, that's, that is definitely true. So, but regarding the agenda, anything else? Okay. All right, then, we will move on to public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Typically, we have a three-minute time limit per speaker. And if anyone wishes to make public comment, and this again is for items that aren't already on the agenda, please feel free to come on up here if you're in the room or raise your hand on Zoom. And I'm not seeing anybody on Zoom with a raised hand and everyone is sitting down. So we will close that item and move to Department Updates. We do know that the Extension Office has requested to give us an update. So if you all would come on up, that'd be fine. Addy and Clint, that'd be great. And then whoever else, I mean, we have limited seating, the table's small, but come on up. And if other people, if you need other people to speak, they can come at one at a time as, you know, whatever you want to do. I'm all good. We just want to hear from you. Okay. All right, so when you, when you come up, since we have people who are not in county government also talking, please make sure to introduce yourself and let us know your affiliation. There's also a sign-in sheet there. It's a little, little bit different than our usual, but. Yeah, that's good. That's good.
Are we, are we, are we good?
We are good.
Hello, council members. My name is Kanan Smith and I'm in my 90th 4-H, as well as being the son and grandson of 10 year 4-Hers. As I come to you on this Tuesday night, I would firstly like to thank you for your time and consideration of a second 4-H youth educator. I'll jump straight in and say that 4-H has changed my life. I built so many connections and friendships that can further myself as a person and for my career. There are many ways since 4-H has molded me as a person, firstly being 4-H camp. I mean, when you're hurting eight to 12 kids around for four days, you learn numerous life skills such as leadership skills and communication skills, and the ability to adapt quick changes. These are skills you just don't learn in a public school. While leading around 10-year-olds is amazing, 4-H has more than just 4-H camp. 4-H has Junior Leaders, which is a dedicated community service-based club. As a very active person inside and outside of school, I can confidently say that Bloomington High School South that is consistently linked in the top 10 has nothing like this. As well as with my leadership position in Junior Leaders, that being treasure, I've learned to be able to speak in front of large groups of people. With the COVID-19 pandemic, that is something that public school simply doesn't offer anymore. Our schools are evolving to be more independent-based and isolated learning. 4-H is counteracting this by giving them more group-oriented activities where people can make connections, make friends, and learn to be normal human beings. As Clint stated in his 4-H proposal, 4-H membership has gone down in Monroe County. However, due to a great kickoff assembly However, due to a great kickoff assembly Clint was able to put up, 4H membership has grown tremendously. I can account to this personally, as am I, 4H Community Club Vice Service Vice President and often Acting President. I've answered so many questions about how the fair works, how project planning works, how to sign up for 4H camp, and how to sign up for special online club meetings. One of these clubs I even joined myself, that being the Genealogy Spark Club. I really felt myself and other aspiring 4H genealogists were able to thrive in genealogy as it's often a project overlooked. It seemed as something that's outdated. With an amazing guest speaker Clint was able to obtain and with the help of Clint himself, we were able to host meetings with upwards of 50 people. With all of these amazing enhancements, 4H still retains its place as being the only place we can build your own project and mold it toward you want to research. Personally, I've been able to make many environmental science-based projects in soil and water as well as in weather. With these, they have made me an activist for climate change and environmental changes that have pursued me to have a clear and environmental law. However, the real problem is Clint is being split so thin, a single man can only do so many things. With the help of a second 4H educator, we were able to have more Spark 4H clubs, get more projects, get more 4H campuses, and get more junior leads to continue to stave in their community in order to make it something we are proud to represent at the state fair and all over our country. For all of these reasons previously stated, county council members, I urge you to vote yes to the resolution that Clint has stated for a second Purdue 4H educating in order to let future generations thrive like my family has. Thank you.
Thank you. Well stated. I appreciate that, your comments. So Addie, would you mind sort of giving the public a little bit of background on what you're here to update us on and what you all are planning for 4H?
Yes, absolutely. So my name is Addie Kwanwa and I'm the County Extension Director for Purdue Extension Monroe County. And just an overview of what we do. So we have a contractual agreement with the county. And so you guys give us resources and we provide our services in exchange for that. So we do agricultural, natural resource education, health and human science, community development, and 4H. And so we have seen that there is, and we like, there's a need for more youth programming. And our first current educator currently does a lot, but we know that there's still more he could do with more support. And so we're here to ask to bring up the proposal of funding another 4H educator that can help support Clint in the work that he does, especially with the schools reaching more lower-income minority populations. There's so much we can do. But we are limited with only one 4H educator. So we're here to just propose the idea of having another educator to multiply the impact that we're already making in the county.
Great. I have a quick question because I know Extension does a lot more than just 4H. And you have three educators? How many educators do you have in the office?
We currently have three. So we have one 4H, one Health and Human Science, that's what I do as well. And we have an Agricultural and Natural Resource Educator.
Great. So the other two, the the Ag and Natural Resources and you both work with adults primarily, is that correct?
We work with, yeah, I guess primarily with adults, but we can work with family and kids. I do more families. Our educator, he does more adults, but we do really, we've done programs with schools and other clubs, so we can work with all youth in general. But 4H is more youth-specific and we are more adults, but we can really work with youth population.
Great. And I have a question for you, Kaden. What do the 4Hs stand for?
Head, Heart, Hands, and Health.
Nice job. Love it.
Our heads were clear, thinking.
So are there other, are there questions for Addie or Kaden? Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. Thank you. Good presentation. Actually, just, I guess I'm just wondering from a process standpoint, what the next steps are. Like, for example, when does the contract with Purdue get finalized? When does it go in front of the Board of Commissioners? What's, what's the timeline for them needing to know what resources are available for?
That's a good question. So after the budget in September and hopefully when we do get funded, we work on the county fiscal year. So are this, once we get funded, then we would start January of next year. So we work on the January to December.
Okay, so you're not on the Purdue calendar?
No, we're on the county, we call the county calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
We vote on our budget this, this summer, late summer. And during that time, we vote on the extension budget, which is in our general fund. And in that budget is our contract with services for Purdue. So, and going over the letter sent to us, sent to you from Purdue, it appears that this would be the time, if we're going to request to have an additional person, that the contract would be appropriate for that additional person. Is there something here I'm missing?
Can you repeat your question? Are you talking about the timeline?
The timeline. We, okay, we're going to vote on our budget for next year, for 2024, yet this summer, late summer. And when we do that, we'll vote on the extension budget along with a lot of other budgets. And the extension budget is in our general fund. And I understand there was some kind of miscommunication. At first you didn't understand you needed to come to the council for the additional person because it really is not a county employee. This educator will be an employee of Purdue. And they pay all of the other recruitment expenses and training, et cetera. And so then our contract for them will be included according to your, the message from Purdue. I think it said $78,000, which is far greater than what the salary is going to be for the new person if we all agree that we need a new person. And so how, it seems to me that, that if we at least allow you to move forward to request that new person, we could have the contract right. When we vote this, this summer on your contract for 2024, do we want that person included in that dollar amount? So we'll have it budgeted for 2024?
So yeah, so the plan is once we do get funded and we have the money to support another educator, the next year we will start to, we start to ask people to apply for the, for the role. So we're planning to start to have them working next year.
Right. And that's the reason, my, my concern is that there are some people that say, well, this isn't until next year. None of our budgets are until next year. We want to make payroll. The first time, it's time to make payroll, we have to start working on it now. So in order for us to get your contract right to include this additional person, it would seem to me you need the blessing of the county to move forward with Purdue to officially ask for that person and have that included in your contract. Now, is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yes, but that's after we have received the funding. So.
After you have what?
Received the funding. So whether we received it or not, then we'll let Purdue know and then the contract.
But we have to know whether or not the, you're saying receive the funding from us?
Yes.
But before you receive the funding for us, we have to vote on it in the budget cut next, whenever that is.
September.
September. So that's when we need to, we need to hear from you so that we can include it in our budget just as we are making other preparations for any other additional expenses. We're looking at that now so that we don't get a surprise come budget time. So that's the reason why we need to either say we encourage you to do this, or we do not.
Go ahead.
I mean, this seems pretty straightforward to me. That basically you are telling us that you plan to ask for an increase in your budget of 120, I'm sorry, 78,520, $20 for your 2024 budget above your 2023 budget. Yes, great. I support it.
Okay, let's go on this side. Were there comments or questions, Mr. Deckard? No, it's not lit up.
Are you green?
No.
Are you guys green at all?
No, they're not green.
Thank you. All right. We want to make sure so people at home can hear this, particularly folks that love what you do. Sorry for the all this. Thank you so much for coming, Kaden. Thank you very much for your testimony. If I understand this right, this essentially adds an additional position in the beloved role that most of our 4H members and families have known for a number of years. Have I got that right? Essentially Clint's in the role now, but it's the old Jeff Holland. John, correct? So I've said that now 70% of the county is on the same page as the rest of us. And one thing I would just say to that, it sounds to me like we're getting what we need to do to do the right thing on this one. Of course, it's always down to the details. One thing I'll note is that job, I was in 4H. It's a, it's a huge regret among many in my life. But I kind of watched as Jeff Holland raised folks up in 4H and those of us beyond a time or two. And so to me, this sounds like it's right. Now, what I would encourage councils, we figured this out, is to make sure on our end, we do everything by the book so that we don't get crossways with Purdue, which we don't want. Being from Bloomington, we got to watch that. But B, that we have something that's very supportive. I sometimes look at things like this and I wonder why we didn't do it five to 10, 15 years ago? Because we all knew what was happening then. And I want to encourage any department or others that are watching these types of things. If you observe something that council needs to know, come and tell us and I appreciate that you have. So I don't have really a question. I did want to offer that, but I do think we got to get this precisely right because we don't want to mess it up. That's a long dynasty of 4H work.
And I think we are getting it precisely right because we've got the dollar amount. Now we have to do is say include that in your budget that we vote on. We need some help from 4H Technology Club. So I, I've heard more about this request from via email, phone calls, and in-person comments than almost anything else this year so far. So that's a testament to the passion that people have for 4H and what it does for our youth and our families in Monroe County. And it's a testament to the, to the great service that our staff has given us. And that includes staff that go far back. So I will be supporting this and I just want to thank you all for being involved in what's important in your lives. And I want to encourage 4H to help people be more involved in their civic life. This is important for our children because they don't, they don't learn about it much in school. So I, I just offered that as a person who was a 4H'er years ago. And having had two kids who went through 4H and I'm team different clubs. I have my 4H stripes, so I remember. So thank you all for your participation.
Thank you.
Thank you. So certainly, I'm very excited that you're here. Thank you for your speech. A little bird told me that you might be involved in debates at Bloomington High School South. So I'm very supportive of high school debates. So good on you.
Woo, I told you, Mom, I should stay.
So, so really excited. Thank you for your speech and writing it down and saying it, your passion really came through. So thank you for doing that. It was very helpful to receive all the communication. Obviously, our colleagues have been pulling up emails, they've been going back and forth. So that's always very helpful. Glad you're here. Glad to support you and I look forward to seeing you again in a bunch of time.
I think that one of the reasons why this was more confusing than normal is that while other counties were getting a second 4H educator, we were not. We sat here with one and actually, I'm not sure anybody's ever requested one before. I don't remember ever hearing about it and I've been sitting around here since 1988. So I'm just saying, it's past time. Do we really want Igo County to get ahead of us? Come on, folks. And they've had one, the, the other counties that have two have had them for so long that to even try to understand the process and see if we could get some inside information from them, it was hard to do because it had been too long. So one of the things is that if we give you the blessing that yes, we're going to work with you on this, then at that point in time, you could start making plans for the future with the schools because the schools want you to work with STEM programs and so forth. If you know that you're going to have this additional personnel, you can start planning for it in the future. And that's the reason why we need to know now because it's a big chunk coming out of the general fund that we do other things with as well. And we need, I wanted you to get your footprint in on that before everybody else had it and it was all gone. So there you go.
Clint hasn't been working on it, so we have ideas of what we're going to do with two educators. So we're ahead of the game.
4H is close to my heart. All the kids in Elsal, and you know, we live downtown Elsal, so I didn't have chicken and pigs and cows. People think you have to have farm animals to be in 4H and that's just not the case. And my daughter, who is a schoolteacher, was a 4H leader in Florida for a couple of years in fifth grade. One of her little guys won a prize for making sweatpants and got to parade around with his sweatpants and win awards. So it does need to be in the school so the kids understand and know about it. Because I don't think locally the city kids are as involved and maybe. I mean, I don't know. I may be wrong on that because, you know, I don't have grandkids. But anyway, I appreciate you being here. I don't know how many of these fine folks here in the audience are your friends from 4H. A lot of people are here. But I just want to say that it's important to this community and I appreciate it. And thank you, Clint, for working so hard to make sure that we were all aware at speed. Thank you.
He's wonderful. Thank you.
Are there other council comments before I move on? Okay, I would like to hear from Ms. Turner King because I think there are, I just want to make sure that we've got the process and all the information. Right.
Sure. I had the opportunity to speak with Amy and I can't think of her last name, but she's at the District Extension Office. And I specifically asked her if this needed to be included in July or in Purdue's July 1st budget. And she said no, that the Extension Office follows the county fiscal budget. So this would be included like a normal budget session item. The, what she had indicated was how the contract works is that as a county, we indicate our needs and what services we want to provide. And then the contract lists the number of educators needed to meet those needs. So right now, the contract specifically includes three educators. And then based on what needs and services we indicate, it would include four for next year. Contract negotiations with Purdue, Amy indicated usually occur around November. So this would be, I guess, budgeted for in the 2024 budget and then contract negotiations would occur in November.
So the contract then is similar to other contracts in that the commissioners would be involved in signing that and approving anything like that. So this is a little bit backwards in terms of we're putting something in a budget before a contract is negotiated?
Well, I think it would be helpful from council to indicate during the budgets, like budget hearings, if they're willing to support an increase in the contractual file.
Okay. Yep. Ms. Munson, did you have a, oh, okay. Under the extension, she's referring to the, to under contractual?
Right.
In the, okay.
I mean, it's just an expense in the extension, which is in general.
Right, right, right. But not, it's different than a regular county employee. There's, we're not going to put it under personnel. We're putting it under the contracts and services.
Insurance, we don't do anything. But it's important that we know about it now so that we can budget.
Yep, absolutely. I agree. And I also have a little warm spot in my heart for 4H. So I worked for Extension a long time ago in Ohio. And, and actually judged 4H projects in the state fair over several years. So.
Okay, so is that, are we going to make a motion then with some, to support you, including? I'd like to make a motion if nobody else is going to.
We can make a motion and then do that.
But include it in there.
Go ahead and make a motion. That would be. Go ahead and make a motion. That would be great.
I would just like to make a motion that the county council support the extension office in their efforts to get an additional 4H educator. And that you include the amount that's been quoted to you from Purdue, which has been provided to us. So we know the amount. And include that in your budget for, that we will be reviewing in September, one September.
Is there a second?
Second?
It works. There we go. Fantastic. Um, I have a motion and a second. So there's still opportunity for discussion and we can, um, move that. I would like to hear from, um, our 4H educator, um, on this because I think, um, well, it'd be a good opportunity for you to have a public face on this, uh, topic. So. We do? Sure. Absolutely. Thanks for, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So much. Thank you, guys.
Hayden may have, uh, covered a lot of Scott's. So Scott may or may not have much for us because Kaden did such a good job.
All right. State your names, uh, please, if you don't mind.
Thank you, President Wiltz, council members. I'm Scott McDonald, representing the Purdue Council for Agriculture, Research, Extension and Teaching. We are a volunteer organization that advocates for youth development in our county. Our mission is to take university-based research, bring programming to the county and help it through their extension service, which you think, you think of the extension office. And development. Today, we're looking at the 4H youth development area. The need to expand to urban youth development here in our community. We've developed, we know there's a need, an additional need for that urban focus. And we hope these monies to be used with this additional staff position. We ask your support, financial support, this educational programming, extension is in a unique position to be able to bring that research out to the schools and out to, um, our local community. 4Hers are four times more likely to get back to the communities, two times more likely to make healthier choices, two times more likely to participate, participate in STEM activities, and two times more locally, two times more liking, likely to be civically active. We have an opportunity with a second position to grease the impact. We want to thank you for support and your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello. Uh, my name is Clint Deck and I am, as a few of us have mentioned, sort of the new Jeff Holland. So, uh, I was a 10-year 4H member, uh, here in Monroe County. I was able to work with youth in other parts of the state before returning to Monroe County. And, uh, although it's, uh, it's kind of known across the state to be like one of the, uh, uh, make or break counties. It's like you, you come here to work as a 4H educator and it is a great opportunity, but there's so much culture, there's so much history and tradition, uh, that you can, you can be stagnant or you can grow like crazy. And I look around, um, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself, but I look around and I, I just see every kid that we bring extension programming to, they're ready to continue. They're ready to see what else there is. But the, the issue is just getting it to them and having enough time to get it to them. So, uh, I have endless passion just to expand and assist every other educator and other youth organization in the county because everybody's a little bit stretched thin and everybody needs help. And, uh, Purdue Extension, providing research-backed curriculum, educators, a proven model to develop volunteers. Uh, it allows us to exponentially increase our impact because we have a hundred years of experience training volunteers and growing a program. So I'm very excited for just what we have the opportunity to do here.
Thanks. Are there questions or comments from council? All right. The next, um, item of business though, would be then to vote on the, um, motion. And this is a motion to indicate that we are supportive and please go forward, work with your council liaison, which I believe is Mr. Deckard, isn't it? Who's our council liaison?
It is Mr. Iverson.
Oh, it's your turn. I think it was me for a little bit.
I'll help them.
Okay.
I need all the help I can get.
Oh, you're the, oh, you're the liaison. I wonder.
Yep. Okay. Work with Mr. Iverson if you have questions on the, the budgeting and getting that, um, figured out and we will, um, you know, try to be as supportive and helpful as we can through the process. Should we do a voice vote?
I, I think we should have a voice vote, but I, I did want to clarify, just so they know, this has to come back in that budget request this fall. So. And I, I don't want that to go without saying, just to make sure so that we don't drop this.
I, I think Adi and I are going to have a, a couple of meetings in the next couple of months.
Yeah. Well, they're getting the budget requests and turning in right as we speak. It is time to get this done. We don't have to.
If there are, if there are people who wanted to speak on this issue, I'm happy to entertain a public comment period for this. But I think you all can concede that we're generally supportive of moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, given that this is sort of a sense of the council's support, I think let's just vote.
Okay. All right. Um, I'm going to do a voice vote for this one. So all in favor of, uh, the motion as extended by Counselor Hawke, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And we would love to see everybody at the fair next week.
This is true. We've got our county fair coming up, don't we? Yeah. Well, best of luck with that. I know that's a, a lot of work for y'all. So enjoy.
Thank you.
Are there any other departments wishing to make, um, updates at this time? I do not see any. Okay. So we can move to item number five on the agenda, which is council liaison updates. So do we have updates from counselors? Counselor Iverson.
Yeah, I want to make, uh, just a quick update. Um, the Environmental Commission has been very busy. Uh, thanks to the, uh, Monroe County Board of Commissioners. Uh, we were able to enter into a contract with Indiana University to work on our climate resilience. And that includes a McKinney Climate Fellow that's been working with us. Uh, Hader Attique is that climate fellow and he and I have been having, uh, weekly one-on-ones. And I'm very pleased to announce that he has been making a lot of progress, even though he is out of the country. We are, uh, almost to the point where we are going to be releasing to the public the Monroe County Climate Trends Primer, which identifies the historic and projected, uh, climate vulnerabilities for our community. Uh, we'll also be, uh, sending out a, uh, community attitude survey as it pertains to climate, uh, next week. Uh, we have put together a Monroe County Task Force and, uh, I will be talking with the Monroe County Commissioners tomorrow about that. Uh, and then we'll also be having a vulnerability and solutions workshop on July 21st, where we're gathering, uh, the community together to talk about vulnerabilities, uh, and how climate vulnerabilities impact, uh, their sectors. And all of this is going to culminate, culminate in a climate resilience plan for Monroe County. It's going to have actionable steps that the council and the commissioners, uh, can take to address the vulnerabilities that our community has identified. So that is the, uh, Environmental Commission. And it's a lot, I know.
It's a lot.
Yeah. Uh, but that's why I wanted to give an update and get that out on the record. The other thing I wanted to mention is that this Thursday at 4:30 PM, the Justice Fiscal Advisory Committee meeting will be meeting. Um, it's going to be chaired by none other than Councilmember Crossley. We're really excited about that. So, um, really wanted to, to highlight, uh, the work of our staff who have been, uh, shorthanded and thank you so much for doing all that you do. Those are my two liaison updates that I wanted to make today. Um, are there any questions?
I have a question about the workshop. Is it open to the public?
The workshop is open to the public. You're going to see, uh, the workshop appear on the county calendar, uh, later this week, uh, as well as a link to register.
Will it be online or in person?
It'll be in person.
Cool. Here?
Uh, it'll be, uh, we're talking about locations right now.
Okay. All right. And I'll stop with the questions. Thank you.
Uh, just as a reminder, um, I attended, uh, virtually, um, the Department's Local Government Finance, um, updates on the legislative overview. And in it was, I mean, they were just jumping from one to the other and you have to listen to that more than once to really be able to catch it. But I did have that sent out to everyone. So if you see that in your email box, if you've got an hour and 15 minutes, because that's all he would allow them to have, but they moved it quick. It is well worth your time because it's all the new legislation and a lot of it is what we have to react to. Uh, the things that we have to do. And, uh, so it's, it's something that we all need to watch. I actually thought we maybe if we had a, ever had an extra time on a work session, we could just sit there and watch it all together because that is that important. And I know Cheryl has some to bring up too. I saw you there, Cheryl. Cheryl went in person on Saturday.
Great. Thank you. And then you said you sent it, um, or had it sent through the council office?
I, I had it sent to you, but I, if you want me to, I'll have it resent in case it, because I know if you're like me, you're getting a hundred emails a day. They're getting lost.
It's a lot, but.
Or do I believe I sent it to you and asked you to have it sent out?
Yes.
Yep. It's, it looks like it, it got here. Okay. On my to read, to watch list. Um, Council Munson.
Yes. Supposedly this is on, is it?
Yes.
Good. I just wanted to give you a quick update on the, uh, state called meeting for county council members. It was the best one I ever attended. It was in the nicest venue. We did not have to walk, walk through, uh, a smoke-filled casino to get to the meeting room.
That's a big plus.
That's a big change.
Because you have to hold your breath for a really long time to get from the elevator all the way to the meeting room. Anyway. One hot topic was broadband. And this, uh, this was an interest of many counties. And there was actually one county that talked not about their problems, but about their solution. And their solution was to work with a consultant. Uh, in particular, this was Beam Longest in Nap, um, very active consulting firm in the state. And, uh, we all identified, uh, areas within their county that were not receiving adequate, uh, broadband service. And then worked with the providers to develop solutions. And we all sort of looked at each other and said, well, why hadn't we thought of doing something like this? It just was, it just was, uh, really well received and highly recommended. So I share that with you all because this is something we should talk about. And our funding can be used to help us with our serious broadband issues and, uh, and our local small businesses and especially our children in underserved areas really do deserve our help. Thank you.
Interesting approach. That's cool. Thank you. Other liaison updates? Okay, seeing none, let's move to item number six on the agenda. And this is about, uh, rural transit and the, uh, changes that have come about recently with respect to rural transit. And I know that, um, Commissioner Thomas, I know you had said you could speak to that. Chris Myers is also here. So if you both want to come up, that's great. Whoever would like to, um, I appreciate you being here. I really just wanted to put this item on our agenda so that we could hear the latest update on what's happening vis-à-vis rural transit and some changes that are coming in 2024 with respect to the routes that are allowed. So I really, I do appreciate you being here. I know you've emailed us all, um, an update, but this is also an opportunity for the public to hear a little bit more.
Go for it. Can everybody hear me okay?
Just bring it just a little bit closer to, yeah.
So, yeah, I'm Chris Myers. I'm with Area 10 Agency on AG. Most of you know me, but not everybody else does. And rural transit, which is the public transportation program that provides services in Monroe, but also three other counties. So it's a regional transportation service flows through Monroe County. Um, Monroe County is the grant recipient of that and we get, um, half support from a federal grant pass through. And then about 20%, that's state PMTF, Public Mass Transit Funds, and then the rest has to be raised locally. We have historically, we've been doing it for 35 years or so and historically have always provided in Monroe County transportation from the county to the city or the city to the county because Bloomington Transit is the urban provider. They get the 5307 federal pass-through funds. And that's always been transparent within DOT. It's always been the way that we've operated and that has come to a point where they're not going to allow that anymore because technically speaking, Bloomington Transit receives the urban um, area funding and allocation for that. So we are going to have to shift Monroe County services, um, beginning January 1st, 2024, uh, to only serve through rural transit outside of the urbanized area to the county or vice versa, instead of just the city of Bloomington as the limit. And so that is a big shift for us because we actually do have quite a few people in the Elletville area that we provide services to, uh, to and from the city of Bloomington who are going to be affected by this. I will tell you that, um, it came to my attention, we were going to be, um, addressing that soon this year, initially planning in February. And NDOT said it would be about a two to three-year process. And then in the beginning of April, we had a meeting with Bloomington Transit and it was all very friendly. Talked about their NDOT's consultant creating scenarios for how that might flow. And, uh, NDOT was very hopeful that BT would contract with Rural Transit to continue serving that area. We got those plans May 2nd. When I met with John Connell on May 25th, it became clear that they did not want to subcontract, um, with Rural Transit. So we are at a place, and that's why I reached out to all of you to say, hey, heads up, this is happening. So I think there are two parts, um, really to just kind of keep on the radar. One is this is happening and we don't have a plan yet, but we are working on trying to find a plan of how services will continue for those folks in the urbanized area outside of the city of Bloomington, most of which is going to first, you know, be a, a situation where they have to take it to the city council and get approval. But the other part related to me and Area 10 and rural transit going forward is needing to know that we would still have Monroe County support for rural transit and also for the funding level of rural transit. I will tell you, and I've presented to you before and I've been pretty transparent about the budget. It requires the local match, which we beg for every year. We aren't a taxing authority like Bloomington Transit is. It's not easy for us to come up with that money and, um, it's a challenge. And we are going to lose a significant amount in a service contract that helps towards the local match from Monroe County. So we need to know that we'll still have Monroe County's government support, but also know that we are going to have to find alternatives for about $60,000 towards our local match that we'll lose through Stonebell, which has been one of our big providers and local, um, support pieces for that urbanized area that we won't be able to serve them anymore. Um, so I, I guess that's pretty much the overview. I'm happy to answer questions. Um, and I know, you know, Julie and Commissioner Thomas and, and Jeff, wherever he is. There have been involved in, um, meetings with Bloomington and conversations with Bloomington Transit as well. Right. So we've had a couple of meetings, um, with John Connell. Um, and usually a board member as well from BT. And from our initial discussions, you know, our first concern is making sure people don't lose service, right? That's that's always forefront, but at the same time. You know, we we do need to talk to, we need somebody from the council to attend the next meeting, which I believe is July sixth. And I don't know who wants to do that. And we're going to try to bring in somebody from Ellisville Town Council as well. Just to have an initial conversation. To be objective, I think one of the things, you know, that has to be balanced here is the fact that the federal government through the state is is providing money to Bloomington Transit to provide service to more densely populated areas than they currently serve. So that's on one side of the ledger. And to be objective, on the other side of the ledger, there is a property tax collected from the city of Bloomington residents to help pay for Bloomington Transit services that county residents outside the city do not pay. So somehow those numbers are going to have to be balanced. So there will be an amount. But I don't know what that is. And that's why the next meeting, it's important to have a county council member present.
Okay, great. I have a few questions, but I'll open it to others first. Counselor Deckard?
I have a few questions and I may not have it right. And I appreciate the message that you sent to all of us as quickly as you did. Is this a, first, let me just ask this. The if we if if we were to go out tomorrow and find the money that we need, what what's the amount that this this council or somebody here locally would be coming up with, you think roughly?
I think that's that's an answer that Bloomington Transit is going to have to provide. I mean, I can tell you that what it costs us to run one route is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars fully loaded, like all of the costs associated fixed and variable. I don't know what they're going to be looking at and I can tell you that they're a union organization, so their costs are a lot higher. So I don't know that answer.
Thank you. And is the, just trying to again, understand this and if we need to get back to me or just hold off. Is this, is the decision for this to be this way, is that a decision of federal, state, or Bloomington Transit?
It's a federal decision that the state allowed for the entire time we've been operating. And, you know, to to be honest, I'm I'm one of those, if you don't know me, I'm one of those that I I'm very particular about doing things right. So it's disturbing to me too that, you know, this was something that technically we're not following the rules on a federal level and it's because they had, they don't want you know, supplanting of services, right? They're funding an urbanized area with one funds and they're funding a non-urbanized area. So that makes sense, right? On resources, but people don't get that. They don't get, they don't get those service boundaries and that's going to be really tough for the people all the way around. Yeah.
I hear people all the time that say, I'm ready to vote in the city election and they're not in the city.
Right.
And vice versa.
Yeah. I will say it's the NDOT's decision to make the imposed timeline of January first, twenty twenty four, which is news to me. It was news to me in April. So it's a pretty quick timeline.
Yeah, that is quick.
Yep.
We thought there'd be more time.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go with Counselor Crossley and then.
So I I thought I heard you say a number of sixty thousand, but for some reason it's really hard to hear in here. So I thought, I I guess I just, I'm making my notes here. I thought I heard you say something just a little bit ago about sixty thousand in numbers and I was just trying to figure out what that reference to. Maybe I'm.
I didn't, but 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 the county, the stone, yes, it's a stone belt, right? The stone belt local match that we will lose because of this change is sixty thousand dollars. So that, so the county allocates some funds towards the local match as well as the other service counties, but then we also have service contracts that help pay for some of that local match and we have one, you know, significant one with Stone Belt. And if, you know, once those changes happen, those about six, the equivalent of sixty thousand dollars annually, we will not be able to continue providing those services because it's point to point within the urbanized area. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Lots of numbers, lots of stuff.
Councilman.
So I I want to make sure I I understand this. It seems to me that there are two separate issues. One is making sure that you have enough resources to be able to continue to sell, serve the rural areas.
Yeah.
But even if that happens, there are going to be people who are going to lose service.
Yes.
And I want to make to make this really clear, just so I understand, the people who are going to lose service are people who live in the urban areas outside of the city of Bloomington.
Got it.
Or people traveling to the urban areas outside of the city.
Correct.
Is that those are.
That's exactly right.
Even if we plug that sixty thousand dollar gap and.
They'll lose it from us. So then there'll be the additional service we're hoping to get negotiated in some way, but that's correct.
The city, so Bloomington Transit would have to make a change.
Absolutely. That's the only way it's gonna, that's the only way it's gonna work. And the city council would have to do that first. Yep. So so they have to, they have to approve the the limp, the the service area for Bloomington Transit to extend beyond the city limits. So that's step number one, the legal, the legal step.
And what he said, the fringe, Ellisville, Steinsville, is that? My my.
I don't know the signs.
I don't think Steinville's on that map.
Got him. Yeah, there's a map. I don't have it in front of me, but.
But it does go up to New Unionville and it goes to, you know, south side. It's anywhere that's densely populated.
Yeah, it's slightly different than some of the other metrics that are in other situations. Other questions, Counselor Hawk?
You know, things change and so it might not at all be the way it was when I was on the board, but I know that we cared a great deal about getting the ridership up because, not because of the money you made for people paying to get on there, but because your revenue was tied to your writers. So if you lose this opportunity to serve all these extra people, you're not going to receive that portion.
So it's a part of the formula. Ridership is a part of the formula as well as breathing as the population in the in the non-urban area. But we will be shifting those services, right? So we have tryptaniles that we have right now, people we can't serve because of routes being full. So we intend to still fill those buses and those those vehicles with people in the community. It's just going to be different parts of it. It's not going to be the urban to urban system.
So if you're in town Bloomington.
Yeah.
And and you have a family member that you want to go see and you have no other transportation and they live outside of the city of limits, then you're not going to be allowed to take your rural transit to go there. Or if if you live outside of the city and you want to go inside to visit your daughter, you couldn't do that.
If they're within that urban area where they want to travel on both points, pick up and drop off, we will no longer be able to do that. Currently, we can from city to outside city or outside city to city, but now it's expanding that that area of what we can't do if it's both points. If it's one point, if somebody's in Unionville and wants to come into a doctor's appointment, that's going to be perfectly fine. But if someone's in Ellisville and wants to come into a doctor's appointment in Bloomington, then that won't be fine. For us. Is that the map?
The map.
And Jeff Cockrell just shared the the urban area map.
Yeah, it's very helpful. It's a visual. It's in that email. I attached it in the email. Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Iverson and then.
That is your turn.
Oh.
You said, no, you said, you said you want to ask.
My questions have keep changing based on what your questions are.
One of the notes I made from your last presentation before all this news break of course was your recommendation was we really need to max out that formula grant, that fifty three eleven from the FCA. So I know Councilmember Hawk just asked about the ridership formulas. Are there any other impacts that this is going to have to the amount of funds we can get from the FTA to to help out?
So I have assurance from NDOT that they will not reduce our fifty three eleven allocation because of this.
Will they increase it?
That's gonna have to, we'll have to see about that. I don't, I don't have any assurance on that.
All right. So so any impacts on that fifty three eleven are really uncertain, but we know that it's not going to fall.
Yes, correct. I still have to have the local match to pull it down. So that's always a part of it, but but yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I know I already, I asked you this question before, but I just, I I want to get this out there. How much of BT's federal allocation gives BT credit for service for residents that they are unable to serve?
So if you look at just the population of city of Bloomington versus total urbanized area, about twenty eight percent of that area is non-city of Bloomington, but still urbanized area. Now, if that's going to equate to the same type of demand for trips and and part of that formula in their long term, you know, allocation, who knows, but technically speaking, the population portion of it is twenty eight percent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wow. Okay. Counselor Manson?
I just wanted to make a a comment that historically we solve the inter-urban problem for transportation with something that was called inter-urban. And this was in the in the nineteen thirties and forties. And eventually the inter-urbans weren't needed because it all became urban. And are we going to grow that way? I don't know, but I just wanted to throw that concept out to you all.
Population is changing. If you if you look at the link that I sent you, which is the FTA's version of the census map that was just finally approved in twenty twenty three. You can see on a layer, you can do the twenty ten layer and then you can do the twenty twenty layer and it's really interesting to see the shifts, some of which actually go away. The contiguous part actually removes and other parts expand. So and those are purple, like were they, were they the same? It's a purple color.
Do you have something you want to share with the class?
No, Jeff, I'm right there with you. I mean, when I first found you, I am a pretty hardcore crisis manager and I'm tears were streaming down my face. I mean, I I know these folks, you know, I I I know who we're serving. So it's, we need to find a solution.
Yeah, I mean, when we talked about it, there it was a few months back, probably last year. It was a few months back. And 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 you said, oh, it'll be a few years off. And I'm like, okay, well, we'll figure it out.
Yep.
And then all of a sudden it's bam, boom. Yeah, it's.
Like two months after being told it was two through two to three years, it was going to be January first. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to share what my question was of Jeff. I realize we were still on both of them. I said, it will be even worse, will it not, if the city annexation goes through? And he said, oh, yes, but at least the people will start getting the services.
This is.
Which I'm not getting now. I'm not saying that's a good thing for you or for anybody. I mean, I don't live in the city and don't plan ever to live in the city. But think about the people are just getting caught in the middle. They're getting no service for any, from anyone. It's not fair.
Yeah, Counselor Iverson.
I just wanted to plug something that that might have gotten missed. The ArcGIS map from USDOT that you shared in your email is really good. I know Dave Askin shared out a map too on the B-square bulletin, but I think, oh, there it is. Thank you for ever sharing that.
Yeah, I'm a visual.
Molly, you're amazing. But it's it's not intuitive that that little stretch going out to Nashville is part of this. It's not intuitive that that little stretch going up to Unionville is a part of it. Like, it's it's really interesting, I think, for the public to digest just visually what this is going to entail and and how much of an impact, the size of that Ellisville gap, like that is, that's really.
Our office is within the urbanized area now. So it really is. So, yeah, where where we're located in Ellisville.
Yeah, Smithville has also got a little urban.
Yeah, that Smithville stretch kind of gives me extra heartburn because that I wouldn't necessarily identify that as urbanized area.
Yeah.
What what is the reason for those long tendrils that don't really, I mean.
The Unionville.
No idea.
Density. So if there are neighborhoods there.
Though, these, one of these just skirt the road.
Right, right on the highway. It's, yeah, I, yeah, I, there's something about that map that relates to roadways. That's not explained in the, yeah.
There's a link that is in the message that lets you actually drill down to the details. You can actually see that there's it's not capturing additional neighborhoods by and large.
I think there's something in their calculations, Jeff. Just as I looked at it, I I thought the same thing. I think there's something in their calculation. There's a blip there on forty five east, for example, right? But I think there must be something in their calculations related to roadways for areas that are sort of maybe the next step down in population. I'm guessing I just I I wondered the same thing. Because you see it in the south as well.
So what about the senior citizen area there in Ellisville? You know, all of those senior citizens.
Or or or.
Please don't, don't, please don't make me cry.
Too, I mean.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, all of those people are going to be affected, which is why we have to have.
They're going to be affected by this.
Yeah.
So all those neighbors of my sisters, they wanted to go to the grocery store and they just.
Yep, yep, sorry.
Yep.
Well, it's a problem we have to solve. I mean, we can't.
It's an opportunity.
Yes, I think it's an opportunity for a really good solution and and I would, I will commend Mr. Connell at at Bloomington Transit for really having these conversations with us. And and again, I, we do need a council member there.
Which brings me back to July sixth.
July sixth, I believe eleven AM. I don't have my phone with me, sorry.
Um, is there a member?
We can send out, we'll send out a meeting notice too, because we have to get Ellisville looped in.
Okay, will someone from city council be at that meeting?
I don't know. Because they're off in July.
Oh, right. That's true.
There are. And so there goes, let's get it before city council as soon as possible, right?
Right.
That takes another month off of our, off of our timeline to get this done before the end of the year.
Yeah.
Just honestly, it does. So it's it's unfortunate.
I would be willing to go for the council if you think that would help.
Okay.
We'll we'll get you added into the invite. It'll be Zoom probably, so.
If you think it would harm, go to the other.
Oh, it always helps for have you there.
Yeah, I think several of us are available and willing. It's just a matter of let, you know. Let us know if you could share the invite and then we'll fight amongst ourselves for a seat at that table.
Um, yeah, sorry to interrupt. There is a comment in the chat from Commissioner Givens that I wanted to either read or have you read. It's a question, but I don't know that Ms. Myers will have the answer. It says, what is going to happen to the Stone Belt clients that Rural Transit has been transporting?
We don't know yet. So I I will tell you that Ward with Stone Belt and I are going to meet maybe this week, maybe next week and talk about those options. Yeah.
Yeah, so basically, to be determined.
Right, right.
Nice. Wow, all right then. Are there any other? Well, I'm sorry, I missed what you were saying.
I was just saying, the Stone Belt clients, many of them who were
Yep, that's right.
In some of the service jobs, they, and they want to make sure they're on time.
Yep.
Absolutely.
They're prompt, but they count on your services.
Yes.
Are they going to get back?
Well, they might have to hire a private provider.
Well, they don't make any money, just we.
No, but I mean, Stone Belt. No, I'm not saying the individuals. I'm just, yeah, just realistic. Somebody.
Well, they'll have to figure their their side of it out. Something BT might pick up on.
Right, right. I mean, we have, we have the power. We just have to figure it out. Are there, and is there any public comment on this topic? I know it's a discussion in work session anything, but I don't mind taking public comment if there is any.
President Wilt, there is an individual by the name of Sam Dove on on Zoom who indicates he has a public comment. I'm not clear whether the comment is related to this topic or a public comment in general, so.
Sure. So Mr. Dove, if you want to type a comment into the chat, you're free to do so and it can be read aloud for you. And you can put that in anytime. So if you have one that you know is upcoming on a topic that we'll have public comment on, we'll hang on to it. that we'll have public comment on, we'll hang on to it. Any other comments on this? I really appreciate your time being here. Um, these types of things, we don't have like a vote on them, but it's important for us to be able to talk through them and get an understanding of the needs.
Um, I think the only thing I would add just briefly, if anybody's watching this and they're just trying to figure out what, what we're talking about, rural transit's not going away. They are amazing. Uh, it is an amazing service. It is an amazing organization. They're still county to county and corner county to corner. There's still a lot of work for them to do and they're not going away. The question is how are these pieces going to fit together differently than they are right now? And we'll, we'll figure that out before the end of the year. Uh, but it will take some money on, I believe. Yep, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next item is item number seven. Um, and it's with our auditor's office, um, and Baker Tilly. Um, Bree, did you want to, um, also introduce this item?
Sure. Um, recently, ARPA program assistance was approved, which is why we have Baker Tilly here to kind of make an introduction and give you an idea of the scope of service they will provide. So please welcome Jenny Karmic and Chris Brenner.
Welcome and thank you for your patience. We've got a lot going on in this meeting. Um, so.
Um, I think I'll just get started, um, give you a little bit of our background. Um, obviously, we're from Baker Tilly. Um, Chris has about four years prior experience auditing federal programs and about a year at Baker Tilly. Um, I have twenty-one years of prior experience and then about three years at Baker Tilly. Audited federal programs, so we do have a lot of knowledge about federal requirements, which do come into play with the ARPA funds. Um, with the ARPA specifically, uh, Baker Tilly is helping a lot of clients nationwide. Uh, Chris and I personally are helping several, several clients here in Indiana. Um, and with our auditing background, we audited local units, um, in Indiana. So we also have the knowledge of um, how local units operate. Um, so we're bringing that to the table to help. Uh, basically what we'll be doing for the county is looking through the projects that you're proposing, um, determining our stance on that. If we feel like it's eligible, um, if we feel like it needs some additional documentation, we'll let you know. Um, if we feel like it may not be eligible, but it might be, if there were some changes made, we'll let you know that. Um, certainly we'll, we'll give any suggestions that we can to, to help make sure that, um, this process is as seamless as possible. Um, I know everyone is struggling a little bit with this money, but, but we will try to help the best that we can. Um, I know there are some sub-grants, um, being made with this, so we will help with the sub-recipient monitoring. Um, any questions on reporting that you have, we can help with those. Essentially, any questions that come up on the ARPA, we can certainly help with, with anything, but that's kind of an overview of, of what we plan to do with the services that we're providing. And I'll let Chris talk a little bit more in depth about what we've looked at so far.
Um, so we have gone through the sub-recipient monitoring policy that has been proposed and written a memo about that, which you may have received. And we've looked at the land trust project and they'll provided a memo related to the compliance requirements that would be involved in completing that project. Um, I've done a brief overview of some of the other projects that are included in the plan, um, and nothing has stuck out as directly ineligible, but, uh, we're going to go, like she said, do an in-depth look at those and make sure that uh, you guys are meeting all of the requirements so that the money doesn't have to be sent back. The, they asked us to comment on your overall status so far, um, the expenses. You've spent about three million dollars of your overall allocation. Um, the money has to be spent or obligated by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And obligation just means that there has to be some sort of contract agreement in place that obligates you to pay. Uh, so like an appropriation isn't enough. It's got to be like a contract to do a specific project, kind of like the end dot projects that they were just talking about. Um, but you can pay for those projects through twenty twenty-six with ARPA dollars, as long as the contract is signed and inked before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, um, yes. Not yet, no.
I suspect that might come up in a later, uh, discussion.
I just forwarded the memos moments ago.
Oh, moments ago, we have received things apparently.
Moments ago.
All right. Excuse me. Um, well, are there questions? Or are Baker Tilly friends? Yes.
So, um, I don't know, the public can see, but, uh, Chris has a copy and I imagine you do too, Jenny, of the colorful charts that, uh, overviews our different expenditures. And my question to you is, what are your thoughts on what it appears on those charts? Are there anything that you'd like to bring to our attention right now? Um, or is that something for, uh, uh, I, you know, just wanted to, to make sure that I, I asked that question while you're here. And I think, yeah, it's being, uh, put up on the screen. If we could zoom in a little bit. My, my old eyes are not that good. But anyway, yeah, there we go. Great.
We did have a meeting prior to, to the council meeting tonight. Um, and then we've looked at these a little bit. Nothing jumps out at us initially, um, that would be an issue, but we're certainly going to go through these in depth. Um, just to make sure that everything's okay. And if we have any concerns, we certainly will communicate those.
Excellent. Thank you.
And to be clear, this list is already allocated funding. Got it. Not proposed, not, um, under consideration, but already allocated. Got it. Uh, Councilor McKen.
So under, in your understanding, after having looked at all of our, our projects so far, okay, sorry, back up. My understanding is that we are able to use, what is it, ten million dollars for essentially any lawful expenditure of county government, right? How much of that have we used, if any, out of our list so far?
I don't believe we have that information yet. That was something that we discussed earlier. Um, I'm not sure it's on the spreadsheet. I'm not sure that.
Item sixteen and nineteen?
I'm sorry.
Number sixteen and nineteen on there.
Items number sixteen and nineteen on the list.
The solar projects and fairgrounds. Okay, thank you. So that's something we definitely want to.
Yes, and any, so we were, when we do the investigation, it won't be specifically for eligible use outside of revenue loss. So if something comes up where it is not an eligible use outside of revenue loss, of cour-, it would be eligible under revenue loss, as long as the county could spend its money on it normally.
Thank you.
Counsel Hawk.
I don't know whether this is the appropriate time to ask this question, if it's not, just say, not now. I, there's a situation that we have now where there is a, I believe, a sub-recipient of dollars that, that went one place and then it was a sub-recipient that did the, the work that was supposed to be in the agreement. And I don't, maybe I'm out of place here, but I think we ought to have, if it's a three-year agreement, I've been asking for, for months now, an update on how much money's left of the money that they were given. What is their plan, projection? What do they plan to do in the coming year? With it, and they've got two more years to go, and what have they done in the past year? So that we know this is what you got, this is the balances you have, this is what you're spending on, and this is what you plan to spend it on coming year. Is that an unreasonable request?
No, that is, uh, well within your right as the grantor to request information from the sub-grantee.
I think what is unusual is that so many times, this is not, these, uh, grants are, are given out in to people who are not accustomed to having to follow that kind of guideline that we have to because it's public dollars. And so it may appear that I'm asking for more than we should. And in fact, I think we all should be asking for it, but.
If, I mean, if you're granting federal dollars to a sub-recipient, you do have a responsibility to monitor that. And, and certainly there is a policy, there's quite an extensive policy that, that we're helping with, um, to make sure that you're meeting those requirements. Um, if it is federal dollars, any entity that you sub-grant that to will also require an audit if it meets the requirements for that audit. And so it, it will be, that money will be audited, just like it would be at the county if you're passing it through to them. So there are federal requirements in place, um, that I, the county is, is definitely going to meet um, related to monitoring that, that money that goes to sub-recipients.
And I want to be clear, I'm not finding fault with our staff because they can't put together somebody else's budget. That's not their job. So, just saying.
Counsel Munson.
I'm wondering if there's not, uh, some fiscal monitoring boilerplate that should be part of every contractual agreement for the ARPA funds. Uh, do you have this that you recommend, uh, for the counties to have with their ARPA grant awardees?
As far as if you're sub-granting money to someone else, um, yes, like I said, there's already a proposed, um, policy in place. Um, and they, they have extensive forms, um, that, yeah, the, we, we've been through them. And in fact, um, to be honest, I think we have some recommendations to scale back what you're doing because it's above and beyond the requirements. So, and that will certainly be, that'll certainly be a county's decision. I mean, if you want to go above and beyond the requirements, that's certainly up to you. Um, but, but yes, we will make those recommendations and, and you already have something like that in place that will help you tweak a little bit, so.
Thank you. Counsel Hawk, um, what do you find normal in the other counties? Um, do they, when it comes to the county council for the appropriation, is the MOU already in place so they can see what they are voting on? Or is it just a dollar amount and we say, go forth and?
I think that varies, um, county by county. I don't know if Chris has seen something different, but as far as what I've seen, I, I think it just varies. Um, it just depends on how the council wants to handle that.
Uh, I haven't worked specifically with a county that has done or asked me for assistance with their grants, but a city had, they usually wait until the money's appropriated and then they write the agreement, um, and distribute the money.
Counsel Harrison.
Uh, I, I know that we just got the memos that, uh, Chris, that you wrote, but I just perusing them quickly. It's already a step, I think, forward in helping, I think, us making fiscal policy know kind of some of the, those regular, your recommendations on what can be done, but also, um, in the, the different policies we need to be following. So I just wanted to, to shut that out. And also for the public watching this, this is, you know, our, our step in making sure that we are, are getting these ARPA dollars allocated into the community by the deadline and following all of the federal guidelines. And having Baker Tilly here is such a great boon to our staff, uh, and, and to the work that we're doing here in Monroe County. So thank you for being here.
Will we be receiving, um, like a regular update from your um, organization, just kind of an update on what's happening or is it still going to come just from your office? I'm wondering in particular about like the burden of giving us information, like.
I think that's up to you guys. Uh, uh, we'll leave that up to you on how you want us to communicate. Um, if, you know, if you want us to be here, we can certainly be here or we can provide our correspondence and, and we can.
I was referring to just, um, um, emails.
Okay, yeah. We'll certainly work that out. I mean, when you send something, we ask for the deadline that you would like to have it backed by. We'll make sure that we'll either meet the deadlines or we'll let you know if, if we have an issue with doing that. Um, and so, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely communicate and, and get all the information back that you need.
Okay.
Bree. I would just like to add that this is the format. We intend to provide updates, just, we'll kind of maybe every couple of weeks that we can update this or however often it makes sense. We're going to add a couple of columns, just one, for example, that it's been added to the plan. Um, just a few other things, just so all the information is at hand. And there, I know Baker Tilly is going to work closely with this as well, so.
Great. Um, and I know the colors are amazing, but I don't remember what the colors all represent. But is there a way to tell kind of those, of the four buckets, which things, which projects go into which bucket?
There's, that's going to be an addition.
Okay, great.
The area.
Great. And, um, it's my understanding that the sub-recipients, if that's the right term, um, have been supplying you with financial reporting. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, so, um, we receive for those advanced grants where we see, um, whatever's spelled out in the MOU, but we've been receiving monthly reports and documentation. And we go through that. We have controls in place. There's resets of eyes kind of going through and approving that everything is there and then we file it away. Um, as far as, um, the reimbursable, uh, we receive all that upfront and then um, provide the dis- distribution of funding. So I feel like we have a pretty good handle on that.
Um, so specifically for, um, a grant where it's an upfront grant, you're getting the monthly reports of expenditures. Are you getting any, um, updated projection, um, for spending over the term? Just to keep an eye on not, not going past twenty twenty-six.
Sure, we've been monitoring that closely and actually working with one recipient recently. Uh, we're working on, um, I think there's a draft updated budget, um, actually, um, in the commissioner's office, they're taking a look at and then, uh, we'll move forward there. But yes, we are monitoring closely.
Great. Is that something that you have in a Dropbox that council members could look at? Or is that something we can request from you if we wanted to check in on, to Counselor Hawk's point?
Yes, absolutely. You're welcome to check in. It's not in a Dropbox. Once it's finalized, um, it will definitely be provided to the council.
Okay. All right. That's great. Thank you. Are there other questions? Sorry for the little side conversation. No? All right. Well, we appreciate you being here and we appreciate having your services. I know the auditor's office is thrilled. So.
Thank you.
It's nice meeting you all.
Thank you.
So we, um, are at item number eight. And we have, um, it's ARPA Rescue Plan, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Fund, uh, discussion with the Board of Commissioners on, um, potential projects. What I'd like to do is, um, rearrange this just a little bit, if it's okay with council, so that we discuss the two specific items under number eight, so discuss B and then C, and then go to the more general discussion.
I find, I don't, I don't understand how that works because, or at least my vote on B might depend on, on the outcome of the discussions on A.
All right. It doesn't have to be that way. I just wanted to put it forward as a suggestion.
I guess, I mean, I think my, my concern is that that's a fairly large request. And I want to make sure that some of the council priorities are, um, you know, I have the support of the commissioners before we move forward on, on these later priorities.
All right, then let's keep it the way it is. All right. I don't know what's happening. All right. So, welcome. Thank you for being here, Commissioner Thomas and Miss Purdy. And it looks like you've got some other folks here as well. Um, and we will go ahead and start with, um, kind of picking up from the presentation that you gave last month on ARPA and, um, if you have updates, that would be great. I hear you might also have a PowerPoint. Yay, there it is. if you have updates, that would be great. I hear you might also have a PowerPoint. Yay. There it is.
Yeah, except I didn't receive information in a timely manner to incorporate the additional, we got information at like two o'clock and I didn't have time to insert into the appropriate and do the math. So so this is really the same, this is the same information as we had in May. There's been a couple minor changes, but I just wanted to go through it again. That we have completed projects with money left over. That's the amounts on the right-hand side. On the right-hand side is what's been allocated, the amount in the, in the center there is what, what's actually been spent, but they're completed, done. So we have leftover funds. We have small balances left and a large balance left on some projects that are ongoing. And again, that can be updated. I don't have, I don't have any more updated information from the auditor's office to clear those accounts out or anything yet. So at some point, whenever we can, we can go through these again and, and look at them for the July meeting, hopefully. These are the items that were appropriated. Some of these are just a matter of getting the MOUs done and the checks out, like Osage Place Habitat for Humanity. Some of them are in, I will use, I hate to use the word peril, but I would say peril of not getting done at all. So it's a mixed bag here. I'm working through and I, I think I need to have a conversation with the good folks at Baker and Tilly, but I'm going to try to work through just putting together how to address the two things that are, have become gnarly and complex, which are the septic and the rural housing repair. Because we need to administer those programs. How are we going to do it? You know, what documentation is needed, et cetera. So we're, I've got it outlined, but I need to have Baker Tilly look at it. And again, some things are just, they're going to get done, but they're not billed yet. So I would count on the solar getting done. And Mr. Cockerell is doing an RFQ for that. And so I would count on that getting done. The Hoosier Hills Bank Food Truck, for example, their, their truck for the Hoosier Hills Food Bank is not a food truck. It's a truck for food. It is different. They're different. Is, has been delayed in the assembly process. So their bill is forthcoming. And so, so we're checking in with all of these great folks and these great organizations and keeping tabs on it. I know Ms. Purdy has been great about keeping tabs on all of this. And we had the, this is from May, but I also made a note that of course we did approve the Baker Tilly contract. That was approved by council earlier this month. So that's still in there, but it's now noted as, as being appropriated. And the here's where some new information comes in, the TBD projects, I had to be mystery woman about last time, two things. One is community foundation dollars and the other would be at least 3.7 million for land trust. And that would be providing affordable housing in our community. And the Area 10 project is still on there for 500,000. So that's, that's, these are new proposals from May that are still new because they haven't been appropriated. And so that, that's where we're at in terms of the whole scenario. This is where we're at. And I apologize in advance if I made any math errors because PowerPoint doesn't do it for you. So. But I don't think there are. So, um, so this is where we're at. And again, I saw two emails this afternoon for additional projects and I didn't get them in. One of them, I couldn't discern what the dollar amount was because it was kind of listed in multiple places in the, I don't know. So, so those are not in here. What just bubbled up to the surface for the council this week is not in here. So I just want to highlight that fact. So that's where we're at.
Okay. I want to acknowledge that Commissioner Githens is online and has now been promoted. So should be able to participate. And Commissioner Githens, if you could just yell at me if I don't notice that you want to say something that's perfectly appropriate.
Thank you.
Um, I'm sure that there are a lot of questions. I'll go ahead and get started with you, Councilwoman Kim.
I'm sorry. Could we go back to the slide with the TBD projects, please? Thank you. So the community foundation, the 1.5 million dollars, is that essentially the same as the 1.2 that we have actually on our agenda as I see today? That is the same. Okay.
Absolutely. 1.5. Wrong amount. Thank you.
And then.
So our agenda one is the right number. Okay.
And then the ones, let's see, the ones that, that came in that were referred to as just having come in late today, what which ones were those?
There's something from Centerstone.
Okay. Yeah. I thought, okay, there were the two. Now the Centerstone one had been sent out months ago.
Yeah.
But that, that said, I believe that somebody from Centerstone will come to our next meeting to address that. So.
We, we did not, we've never seen it. So we, we would like information on it.
Okay. Yeah.
Because we're supposed to remember, we have this team thing going on. Remember the day? That was good. So.
Somebody from Centerstone will come to our July 11th meeting to speak briefly on it.
So that's, that brings up maybe prematurely, but I would like to have this conversation. We can, we can take it wherever we want in terms of all the way down to appropriating, but I would like to continue this conversation at our next meeting as well, so that we have ARPA as a, as a agenda item, because I do know that just in our own wanting to hear from folks about some of these potential projects, some of them couldn't make tonight and could make our next meeting. So just throwing that out there that I'd love to continue.
We should talk about it every once a month because we've got a lot to work through.
At this rate, yeah, I agree with you. Moving past that, I just wanted to get that out there. Questions? I'd like, I, let's stay on this just a little bit because these are some really big ticket items. The land trust, are there questions about that one in particular? Yes.
I do have a question about the land trust and it, it comes from the Baker Tilly memo that we just got like 10 minutes ago. So this is hot off the presses. So I'm, you know, there's not, there's not going to be like gotcha questions or anything like that. But one of the things that was raised in that is that the, the pro, the project seems to meet requirements for SLFRF. But the timing is going to be kind of tricky. So I think this is this is an interesting project, but I, I wanted to, to have a conversation about that too.
I was wondering, I mean, if to go on to what, what Counselor Iverson, can we just have kind of big picture explanation? Cause I think a lot of people don't know what anybody's talking about with respect to land trusts and certainly the public is going to be.
Well, I'll give as big a picture explanation as, as I can. I, I think one of the items that I think have been discussed is a need for affordable housing. I've worked with the redevelopment commission and we've been talking about a residential TIF and looking at the need for affordable housing. We were, I guess, staff wise, we've been talking about, well, can we buy land and use that for affordable housing? Or are there federal requirements that make that not a good idea? I think early on in the whole process, I went to a CLE where they said, don't buy land because then you've got to deal with all the, the federal things. So when, when we had Baker Tilly come onboard, we were kind of asking about what happens if the, the county didn't want to have some land that they were going to subsidize the, the price of in order to get affordable housing. And so that's, that's really how that memo was generated. I think in addition, if reading the paper, I think it was last week or last weekend, the city of Bloomington had done a, a similar, a land trust. And I think it really, for the public, if they want to really know, you know, kind of the pros and cons of it. I think that, I think the article in the paper did a very good job of saying what the pros and cons of it, of a land trust on. And so that's kind of that project, right? You know, it's like, we, we were, we wanted to make sure that it was possible to do it before you guys talked about it because it's easier for staff to, to get up out on the front end for some of these bigger projects, you know, you know, you've got the land costs of that, then you, you have an infrastructure cost of that. You've got to, you know, you've got to, we got to, we'd have to find partnerships. I think if we look at some of the various and, and I met with, I met with Baker Tilly right before this. So there's a little bit more information, but you know, there's some timeframe issues with, you know, if, when, once you purchase it, if you're going to use, utilize one of the federal programs, you have to have houses built within a year or are constructing houses within a year. So there's, there's a lot of, if that's a route that people are interested in, there's a lot of need to get moving now and identifying partners and looking at property and making sure that we can get the infrastructure in so that we can get a house built a year after we buy it, you know? There's just a lot of moving parts and I, I personally think we have time, but we don't have much time to get moving on it if we want to have everything obligated by the end of next year and meet that year diet deadline from when you, when you purchase the property to have it, making sure the, the home is there. And so the, what that memo outline was a couple of different routes that we could look at to do that. I think there are other routes to that, but those two particularly tie into the federal funding, which are federal programs, which if we follow their guidelines, we it's like an automatic, less documentation required. And, and, and you know, some of their programs make sense as far as area median income and things like that. So there's, there's some thought about looking at those things, but I, I think that's kind of the big picture of what we're talking about.
And I will say I have not seen a memo. So I, if I could get one, a copy of it, that would be great. I may have been sent while I've been here, but that would be lovely to have.
And Peter, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to hijack you. I just wanted to know the big picture.
Go ahead.
And, and I think Jeff, to your point is that I think there's a lot of decisions that we need to make about this important project. Like do we loan the funds to a third party or do we grant the funds to a third party? That loan's got a 20-year term on it. How does that impact the way that we follow through with these guidelines over a 20-year period? There's, there's a lot going on here. It's, it's a worthy project, but.
I think, I think, and I think there's a lot of different routes to go. I think the, the big picture question is, is this a route we're interested in? And is this a route the county council and the county commissioners want staff to spend time looking at, right? I, 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 that's kind of my perspective. I, I, I think it's that we could probably, if we got going quickly, meet some of these deadlines, but I am not a real estate developer. I am not a, I am not, you know, I, I, I don't know. And I know that the market on all that has changed dramatically in the last few years. So.
How many houses are you thinking that, that this whatever land trust dollar amount, how many houses? Yes, I'm thinking about how long it takes to get, you know, get it under room and how many people you can get qualified to, you may have a lot of people out there who want to buy a home that we're talking about. They have to have income. They have to have proof of their income and have certain amount of being able to pass to be able to get in there. So you can only move so many families along a certain amount of time. So are, are you talking 20 houses, 50 houses, 10? I don't.
I guess that, that's in my mind, the reason we need to, to decide whether we're moving forward. We need to reach out and get partners who can help us understand what's realistic, what's cost effective. In, in my mind, it would be as, as many as is practical. But I don't know what is practical means in that sense.
Well, I, I just would like to suggest that would not be a situation where the county would end up owning the ground and as people, so their houses have moved on, if the county was still on that ground and because, and if you require it always to be low income so that you never in that neighborhood grow pride of ownership, add on, do extra things in their yard. I've worked, I've done this for years and years and, and I can see in the neighborhoods they, they, they learn to love their neighbors and their neighborhood. And they think maybe build on a bare patio or they fix up up their yard or something. But if they think that they, they will never be able to do any better and stay there because if they decide they want to move up and they sell it, they have to sell it to somebody else that is very low income. And that's just not going to make that kind of upward mobility that, that we all want to see. Everybody wants to be successful, move on. And then they can use that to move on and then other people can start another area like that.
Any lower income people have pride in their in their homes and take care of their homes and want to.
Will always need it.
And I would like to, she said at the beginning first.
Yes, go ahead, Mr.
I, I, I don't think there's any intention of the county retaining ownership of the property. I don't think there's any interest in the county purchasing and building homes, right? I, you know, I, I don't think there's any interest in that. Now, I do think that what Marty points out is was addressed in the newspaper article with a land trust and that there is a trade-off there with the, the affordability versus the, the accumulation of wealth. I do think that is a trade-off if you use the land trust model. I, I, I don't think there's any doubt about that and that the, the trade-off is that, that that it can be structured so that people who meet, and I think if you read the memo, that those are structured for at least 20 years where people would have to meet income guidelines in order to be able to purchase the homes there. And there would be guidelines then whether it's set in rules or just the natural lending and, and banking system that would require, you know, who can, who, how much a person who makes that, that amount of the area median income could afford. I think there are some, some there's under that land trust idea. So I don't, that's not incorrect, but that, but that is one of the trade-offs of using that, that mechanism.
Okay. There are a lot of questions and I'm going to start with Commissioner, Commissioner, sorry, Council, Counselor Deckard.
Take the demotion.
So I, I'm looking at, at just the number and based on, you know, everything I've heard over the years with, and can we go back on the slide to the?
So that number's 4 million because of the three, the three is off. So.
So 4 million. If we take, if we, you know, let me just say this to kind of start off. A huge concern that I have is the, the home I live in now and the home that I lived in as a child were both expanded neighborhoods in this community that allowed for new families to come in or to leave where they had been rural and urban to go into, to, to different houses. I believe that family home in 1977 was around 27 to $30,000. We are well beyond that these days. And the issue that we have is we, I, I think as a community, we're not building those neighborhoods anymore. Those things are done. So there would be no place for my family here. We certainly have a lot of family pride, but I hate to embarrass my folks, but we were broke as a joke, yet we're okay. Now, what I look at, when I look at this number and I think about housing prices today, and we are far filled from 30 grand on anything. But if I look at 4 million and I take that and I'm, I'm, I'm going to assume that cost is still cost. And I divide that, I'm going to get that we're essentially talking about 13 homes. Because you take the land, you take its worth, you take what to develop the home, we're talking probably about 13 homes. And I get, and I may be off on that. I'm not a developer, nor do I pretend to be. But if we're talking for that kind of an amount, my question, if that's 13 homes or 30 homes, or I'm off. But if we're talking for that kind of an amount, my question, if that's 13 homes or 30 homes or I'm off and it's 93 homes, and I don't think I am. How seriously, when it's hard to build anything in this community this quick? How seriously can we get that done? And into the hands of people by December 31st, 2024?
Six. Six, right?
What's that?
Well, the 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 money has to be expended by 26, right? Has to be obligated by 24. We have a year from when we purchase. To get the. If we use one of the federal programs, we have a year from when we purchase to get to get our homes ready. And you know, if we don't utilize one of the federal programs, we've got a little bit more reporting work to do. Um, so there are, I I don't have all the answers, but I think. The the thought is. That. 2026 is our hard deadline. If everything goes well, we would buy. The the land and then have a year or we or whoever or whoever our partners are, we get the land and then they. We would utilize one of the federal programs. And I I say it's better because from a staff perspective, it's a lot less reporting. Doesn't mean at the end of the day, when when everything gets done, that it's going to be considered better. Um, that there would be a year to get that going and it's going to be a challenge, right? It's going to, it's going to require a lot of conversations. Um, I would tell you that. We had a redevelopment commission meeting. Couple of years ago and Steve Smith came in and talked about the models and how the how neighborhoods are made, right? And how the financing works and a third of the cost of. Of developing. The neighborhood, not including the house, a third of the cost is just the cost of the land. Right? So, you know. If you, you know, if we're talking four million, then you know, you're taking a 12 and and the and a third is financing, right? So if you if you. And a and a third is the infrastructure cost. So you know, if you if you can kind of get those other two and then whatever that number comes into per lot, you multiply it by five or six. And that's that's, I mean, that's just how he explained it. Maybe I'll try to find that meeting. But I I just say that because it was a really interesting and it was a different way to look at it than I.
I I'm just, and here's what I'm saying, I'm just skeptical that any piece of land someone's going to go, that's a good al- algorithm. And and we're going to get higher than a 13 to 14 home, kind of right? And that's just be ballpark.
I I think I think, um, to be fair, so I I agree with that perspective that we should always have. A place in our community so that folks can grow into homeownership or transition out of something else to.
Yes.
A different homeownership. And. Everybody comes at us all the time. What are you doing about affordable housing? Well, I can't print land. And land is way expensive. And when you look at a base price of land, you're automatically just talking about homes that are not generally affordable now. Can we be really creative? I hope so. And I'm talking tiny homes, tiny home communities, small starter homes, community gardens. Um, you know, there are a lot of things that we could look at that would really. If if the land is paid for. Land and infrastructure even better. Then all you're doing is building what you can buy on Amazon for $40,000. You can buy a pre-built apartment, studio loft, 600 square feet. For I think $49,000. Um, so there are ways to do this. We're not, so let's not think traditional. Let's let's, I think we can be creative, but we need to know that you all want us to look into this before. A lot of staff time is spent looking at options and perhaps we can come up with some more options. For July's meeting or the work session, but I think the sooner if we just have, hey, we're interested. Spend some time on it. If we knew that, I think that would be helpful because we don't know. And if we don't know and we spend a whole lot of time, and I say we, Jeff, Jeff spends a whole lot of time on this. And then it's like, we never wanted this. We need to know that now or soon.
Council Everson.
Yeah, so. I I I don't think it comes down to, we want it, we don't want it right now. I I I do think that. Based on what we know about housing supply in the community, this is a worthy project that. My question, I guess, to you, Jeff, is. It according to the home program, and this is on page three of the memo, which I think we've got that there is, is the home program. Seems to require that whatever we build be single family housing.
I believe that is correct.
Okay. So the realtor's dancing over here. So I I think that's something to keep in mind, too. The the other requirement is the purchase price cannot exceed 95% of the median purchase price for the area. So that's also high here. So I I would just keep things in mind. And then my question to you is. That in in the conclusion, you know, they said the timing requirements, this is Baker Tilly writing. The timing requirements for the project to clear the presumptive eligibility requirements may not be possible. What happens if that's the case? What happens if you put in all the time on this? And we don't hit the various deadlines? Do we de-appropriate the funds? Do we lose out the funds? Do we?
I I guess in in my mind. I don't think I would ask for an appropriation today, right? Sure. I mean, I I I think that we've got some. Partnerships to create. I think we've got some. Uh, decisions to make as we move forward. I don't think now is the time to put. Any of of the ARPA money towards this project. You know, I I want to reach out and you know, I I know that that Cook has done. Some affordable housing in the surrounding counties. I I have reached out to Ron Walker. I want to hear what their. Pros and cons of what they did were. I I I just think there's a lot of that. I think the. The timeline may be more compressed and I'm going to be really comfortable with because of of those. I think the other thing is is. We have Baker Tilly on board and I know our honor is off, but we could probably work with them to come up with a. Justification, a written justification, because I think if a project's over so much, you you have to have a different kind of justification for the ARPA Act. We could, we could go that route and then maybe not have as strenuous of of a timeline. I just think that the goal is to probably meet. One of those federal programs because. I really don't, I I think feeling the pressure of having to get it done quicker. I mean, I we want to do it well and we want to do it well, but I think. But also having it so that, you know, we have a deadline where, you know, if we buy the land, we have a year to get going. It 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 allows us to move and it requires us to move a little quicker than we're going to be comfortable with. Um, and and that's. Might not be a bad thing, given what we're hearing in the.
Council McKinn.
Council Deckard, I I guess I got lost a little bit and as to how you came up with the third, only 13 homes. That this project could support because I I thought we, when I I've heard from Mr. Cockrell earlier, we're talking about larger numbers, so I'm.
I think that'd be awesome. And and again, this is, don't nobody, kids at home don't do the math like I do, but. I essentially took. Roughly what homes net these days, just this me looking at the newspaper, what things are going, which are skyrocketing all the time. And I guess the question I I want to see in material, um, that we would consider is how we know for sure. That those selling the land are not passing the cost on to us at at a as high rate as what we currently see home selling.
But but we're not talking about using this money to buy homes, right? This is to buy the land, which only.
But this. Correct, but the minute people know that the county's out shopping, everyone goes, guess what?
Right, and we can't buy more than.
999 a piece.
Right, and we can't pay more than what the average two appraisers, right?
And I just, I I'm always, I I always want to see the detail on what that price actually comes down to. Because anticipatory cost starts becoming this thing.
Yeah.
But can. It are, is that the number of homes that we're talking about or we're talking about?
I guess one thing I keep in mind is I don't see necessarily. The the county. I I I see the county's input to this to be the land plus maybe if we can work out some of the infrastructure for the land, right? So it wouldn't be the actual purchase and build of the homes. I think that's who. We we need a partner to develop it, but their cost would be reduced because it won't have. To deal with the cost of preparing the land. Knock on wood or the cost of buying the land and then that's the trade off, right? We, that's the trade off in making sure that it's affordable. And so. I would think it would be considerably more than. 13 homes, right? The, I mean, at some point, this conversation is going to turn into. What? Here's some land, here's how much the infrastructure is going to be, here's what our partners can do. And so I'm, I'm also not going to tell you that the. Four million or whatever is is going to, at the end of the day, be the right number. It's going to depend. I mean, if if we had, if if we were putting four million into the project, I would expect more than 13 homes.
Right, I I don't.
If we're going to proceed at 500,000 into it, then I'm, then no, no, I don't expect to be much. More than that, I I.
Um, Commissioner Giffens has her hand raised.
Thank you. Um. I think what part of the discussion for me is whether or not we want staff to look at this project and I certainly do. And I think that affordability. Is things that are linked to not only the size of the home, but the type of the home. Um, I've told, uh, Counselor Crossley, this, the first home that my husband and I bought was a a small, very small town home. We had a lot of pride in our home and when we think about people moving into the area that. If we think that these are starter homes, that doesn't take away from their pride in the home, that doesn't take away from the fact that. It's not what we've seen in other parts of this area. But, um, you know, my my family was like Trent's. We didn't start out with very much at all and I'm talking not only about my parents, but my husband and me too. Um, and so. There you you can build equity. Over time, and I also think that we need to talk about the fact that affordability. Is linked to our average wages and it's also linked to the interest rate that's being charged at any given time. A few years ago, you could buy a lot more home than what you can buy now. So I think there are a lot of factors that we can't predict. But we can also work to make things affordable with what we plan here. So I would really. Push to have our staff look at whether or not this is a project we want to do with the ARPA funds. Thank you.
Because we're not going to have answers today, right? I mean, these are great questions. These are all really good questions. But is there an interest, right? That's.
Council Crossley.
Yeah, I was going to say, um. All right, real quick. Um. I I like the idea of this and I applaud the city and how they've been doing stuff and it's about time that the, you know, the county is starting to think. Of ways that we are trying to build affordable housing, um, for people because just because you start off in low income doesn't necessarily mean that's where you stay. Um, and I do believe I'm the only person that continues to rent here on the council, but so I speak from experience when I say. That this actually will help people because for me personally. Uh, one of the reasons why we continue to rent is because A, number one, we didn't think that we would still be here. Um, three kids later, we're still here. Due to the nature of my council job, then I'll be here for however long, and the creek don't rise. Um, so that's it. Number two, the rent, um, and and all the other places, it's just and. Blame and trying to find housing, um, just because we do have a two-person income doesn't necessarily mean that we can afford all those things. Or we are low to middle income and if we are, so be it. That is where we are. That is where the folks that we, um. Serve, um, especially a lot in my district, I'm sure will would could benefit greatly from that. So I I I like the idea of this. Again, this is just a topic of discussion. This is a conversation. I do hope that we can take this seriously, um, and continue on those conversations and figure out something because. We all know that we have the deadlines of 24 and how we have to do things in 26 and spinning that out. So I do think, again, this isn't something that we're setting in stone now, but I definitely think. This is necessary. Um, and if we can do this and help those low to middle income folks. Um, go further in life because and I can only imagine what we could do if we were to do something like this, how we can help. And continue to help generations to come, then so be it. Um, and I challenge county council and commissioners to do something like that. So I appreciate. Um, this conversation and I would appreciate something like this to happen.
So. I just. Got was handed the memo and looked at it. Very briefly, high level. Um, and one thing that caught my eye. Was a possible intent to. Collect on the equity if, um, homes are sold on that and. I have to say that. That troubles me because one of the things I really like about the idea of a community land trust is the opportunity for. Generational wealth.
Yeah.
And for the folks to be able to collect on that equity that they put into their homes. So. And I am not an expert on this, but that's just briefly, you know.
There's a local. I don't remember which program it is, but there is a local program. That takes half of the profit on a house.
Yeah.
They help with the down payment, but then they take half the profit when the house sells and I just, I just. I've. Not interested. I I'm personally, I I agree with you. I I. You're, we're trying to build generational wealth and you want to talk about pride of place, it's your place.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't belong to someone else.
All right, I just, there's, there's just a couple of. And like I said, I haven't read this thoroughly at all, but just a couple of things that pop in my head is like red flag. Then I maybe wouldn't be as interested, but in theory, I agree, it's.
Well, we we asked, what are our options? And I think that is an option. It doesn't mean we have to take that, right?
Just throwing it out there that that option.
We're informed.
Yeah, not not attractive to this person anyway. Um.
Well, so in the, um, the city model, the one that was written about in the HT the other day, the. Sellers still do get to benefit from the appreciation value of the home, value and increase the value split between the trust. And the uh, and seller, so they do get to benefit from the.
Yeah.
Uh, from some accumulation and wealth.
Some.
But, yeah, yeah.
Some, but why not? Anyway.
Yeah, I don't, I I I, like I said, I mean, I really feel like if we're doing this. It's not, it's not an investment moneymaker for the county. It's something to help the community and I know that I I know that's where you're coming from.
Sure, permanent affordability. Otherwise, you're just building market rate houses or at least after the first generation it becomes market rate.
Well, I mean, I, yeah, we need to look at.
I guess part of me, my first reaction to to the, you know, being able to collect is that if we were going to utilize that, we would. Direct it straight into an affordable housing fund where we would make that that available. I'm not saying it's a good idea to do. I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
Okay.
But I, but I do think there. At least from my perspective, that I knew that there would be some concerns with putting it into just a a general fund, for instance. But you know, putting it into a. A uh, a county fund. I also, I threw a curve ball to the Baker Tilly folks and I, they, they were, they were smart enough to say they didn't have the answer. But I was like, could we direct that into a community foundation fund? Um, for affordable housing that that they could manage that. I don't know what the right answer is, but I do know that, you know. These are things where these are questions that are going to be asked and they're going to be asked as we go through here. What's, what's the best avenue? What's the best route? So if we move forward.
So it does seem like a majority or. Unanimous group here is interested in at least. Research information. So, okay.
Council Hawk.
Uh, yes, I I would really like to see if we can find, if we're thinking about doing this to be able to. Uh, invest in ground that is, uh, available for the rural housing program, usually called farmer's home. Because, uh. Then, and there's two different kinds of programs. There's a direct loan and there's a guaranteed loan. And if you go to the direct loan program, then then the government can, uh, loan you the money at a lower interest rate. And and for longer year term of years, so more and more people can, now they don't always have a lot of money for that, but we could. Discuss that with rural housing program and see. Um, if they still are working with a direct housing, how much money they have to work with that and so forth, but we would have to get it. Far enough outside of the city so it would be in a qualifying area. But if you do that, then, and if there's enough money in that direct loan program, then you've got those buyers already lined up. And they do the work to get them qualified and then we can move forward. And then there's also that the same program, they could buy in the same area using the guaranteed program and that's. There's several lending companies here that use that program. So it everything is right down to where they get them. So it, everything is right down to where they get the mortgage. Is it, just no matter what you do, is where are they going to get the mortgage? How much money down do they have to have? And, and, you know, what mortgage company is going to work with you? So I, if we want to use like the guaranteed program and the direct program, let's, let's see where we might be able to look to make it. If there's no sewer available there, what does it cost to put in a package plant? I don't know, maybe that's way out of, but I have no idea.
Yeah.
But that's, that's all things that we need to.
I, I think there may be, and I agree that, that that's one option, um, that, but there may be other ways to leverage a project with some other state and federal and or federal funding. And so, but we can't go out and look for that until we have a little more clarity ourselves. But clearly, um, a large project will be attractive, hopefully, to some other funding sources that can, uh, supplement what we want to do and, and make it even better.
Well, with the interest rates going up, the direct program where you can get in and the government will reduce your interest rate in order to get you qualified, that's a program and it might work really well.
Yeah.
They, they paused the hikes. It's paused. They paused the hikes.
So we, we have a few more, um, yeah, discussion points around, around this. But I do think that the sense I'm getting is that please look into it and keep us in the loop and maybe we can talk about it. I mean, I don't know how quickly you're looking and getting information, but like I said, this will be on the agenda again next time, um, July eleventh, I think.
July.
Maybe the
Work session?
The work session.
Standing item for discussing.
Marty could
If you don't sleep.
Email me the, well, I I've got, and Angie, the
Yeah.
The loan programs she talked about, so we can make sure we incorporate those.
Okay. The rural housing program.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so.
Got folks.
Yeah, I think that, um, what we should do now is talk about a couple of the other possible, um, fundable projects that we've had proposals for. And one of those is, um, one that uh, Counselor Iverson brought to us for, from the People's Market. And we, it looks like we have folks who have been extraordinarily patient, who could maybe talk to us about that. And, um, I do want the commissioners to stay involved in this part of the conversation as well. Um, do we need another chair?
We love, also you can probably hear me from two states away most of the time.
Well, you never know where people on Zoom are, so.
Yes, 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 yes.
The Zoom folks.
So thank you for your patience. I really appreciate.
No problem. Sorry, we're farmers, so we, this is like.
Be sure to state your names before.
I've got tomatoes that need attending too. My name is Jada B. and I'm from, uh, People's Market, Bloomington.
Lauren McAllister, Three Fly Farm, but also People's Cooperative Market.
Brandy Williams, People's Cooperative Market, also a farm, new farm owner, so still the name is up in the air, but developing.
Congratulations.
Exciting news.
And, um, we're just here to talk to you a little bit about People's Market. I'm just going to introduce it in case you have not heard, uh, all about us before. Um, People's Market is an intersectional anti-racist food justice farmer's market. Um, and those are a lot of words strung together, and here's what they mean. Is that we focus on BIPOC farmers in our, uh, state and in particular in our region and in Monroe County. And, uh, our, our market was formed, uh, through the turmoil of what was happening in the city-run farmer's market with white supremacists who are still currently allowed to vend at the city market and are vending at other markets in town as well. Um, so People's Market created ourselves as a space where we wouldn't tolerate that sort of hate. Um, and that we were building, um, a space for new farmers and young farmers and in particular BIPOC farmers, queer farmers, to have a space to thrive. Uh, because we're essentially, the model of the city market was cutting those farmers out. Um, a lot of the values that we, uh, are, uh, interested in, our mission is to, uh, welcome, do welcome inclusive and accessible. We're led and directed by farmers and vendors and people from marginalized communities. Uh, we're supportive of the local farmers, BIPOC farmers and small farmers and businesses in our area. And we're an educational and cultural hub, a source of awareness for the work that is needed to do continuously to, um, bring more, uh, black farmers into the fold, as well as give, um, a voice for black farmers and brown farmers and indigenous farmers in our area who, um, are often, um, marginalized by the dominant white farmers in our community to the point of where some farmers will, in our town, will claim that we don't exist. Um, and we're here to bring local nutrient-dense food to Monroe County. And how we do that is through our sponsored box programs. And our sponsored box programs are very simple. You can, uh, as a, as a person who has funds, you can go online and purchase our sponsored boxes that will then be given away to people in need. Um, you yourself, if you are in need of local nutrient-dense food, you can, um, purchase that local nutrient-dense food from us, or you can request a sponsored box. Um, in the first year of running People's Market in two thousand and twenty during the pandemic, um, we started right at, uh, March there of the pandemic. Um, through two thousand and twenty, we gave away fifty-five thousand dollars worth of free food, um, during a pandemic. The second year, we gave away around sixty-five thousand dollars worth of free food. And this, uh, past year, it's around eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand, because we had some grants and things like that to help us. The first two years, we were specifically running on donations from the community. And as anybody who is working in nonprofits know, um, that money is drying up. People in our community do not have money and funds. And so we started looking at larger granting bodies to help us continue this mission and growing, because the need keeps growing. If we thought the need was bad in two thousand and twenty, it is tripled, if not even more uh, extensively more need than that. Um, and so we formed a co-op to help, uh, the farmers work together. We support cooperative economics, so we buy in together and we, we survive together. Um, and, um, our model is a decentralized leadership, so that's why you have three of us here tonight. But the three of us are the, um, uh, incorporators of, um, People's Market. So we're the ones on the legal docs, so you'll see us around more often possibly than other folks. But there are many, many other vendors and farmers involved and have been involved from the beginning. So we're going to, uh, give you a proposal that we have. Um, we have it in paper, but we're also going to send it to you. Um, and have you take one and pass it around.
You're magical.
You're magical. I love you. Um, and so speaking of, uh, magical, I'm going to hand it over to Brandy here, who's going to talk about our funding proposal. Uh, once everybody gets their little, um, sheets. And I hope I did pass out enough. I should have. If not, I could, you can have.
Absolutely. Well, you're passing those around. Um, I can just speak to a little bit of what Jada is talking about in the sense of the need increasing in Monroe County, um, in the southern region of Indiana and across the entire state. Um, right now, our proposal is showing, you know, an ask for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to respond to the far-reaching public, um, health and negative economic impacts of the pandemic by investing in food justice throughout Monroe County. But like I said, in the entire southern region of Indiana and the entire state as well. We work with a lot of different distribution points, other organizations within the community and the state. And right now, the need is just immense. We have, you know, even one of our organizations reported in to meet the need of their patrons, the community that they are serving. They would need fifty thousand dollars worth of food every week. That's just one of our distribution organizations that we collaborate with. Another distribution organization said that they are specifically, their Latinx population has doubled in the last year. And they are not only, they are not only touching folks in Monroe County, but in Owen and Green and surrounding counties. They now have folks coming over the border from Illinois in order to access fresh, local nutrient-dense food and, and meet their basic needs. So the need is exploding right now and we aren't coming anywhere near the point of meeting, meeting that need, um, in an efficient way. So I'll talk about the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar ask and what that looks like. And then Lauren will talk about the expansion of that based on these needs that we, that we now understand after, after, um, speaking with the organizations that we collaborate with. So to break down the, the two hundred and twenty-five thousand, sixty-seven thousand of that would be for a certified kitchen space. That is to, serves a benefit on twofold. One, we have it feedback from a lot of distribution points is yes, fresh, local nutrient-dense food is great. But some people do not have the resources to even prepare that food. So we've moved into this space of if we're really listening to what the need is, there's a need for also prepared food to be distributed out in these, through these same entities. And then on the other side of that, our farmers have a need for a certified kitchen space in order to be able to produce their larger quantity of raw product into a value-added product. If you know anything about farming, you know, most farmers have off-farm jobs. And so the USDA is really focusing on this as well with grants that if you can have matching funds, they're really encouraging farmers and entities like People's Cooperative Market to find ways to create these value-added products. Because then, you know, a farmer can slap a label on it and they can sell it at Blooming Foods or sell retail anywhere.
And let me just say real quick what a value-added product is. So if you are somebody who has berries on your farm, you can sell the berries, yes, but you can also turn the berries into jam. That's a value-added product. So it's been transformed from its raw, original form into something else that is more shelf-stable. So including any forms of canning, or if you have, if you have, uh, hives, uh, using the, uh, honey and or beeswax and things like that. So those are value-added products. Taking any product that you grow on the farm, incorporate it into something else like tea, right? So if you grow mint, putting it together with tea, and there you go, that's a value-added product.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So that's, that's the certified kitchen, um, budget. And then about forty-eight thousand dollars in sponsored box support. So Jada spoke to you about what that is. That need, again, it, it continues to increase. We constantly have, you know, more and more requests every week that we operate. And those requests are coming not just from Monroe County, but outside of Monroe County through our other distribution organizations that we collaborate with. Um, so that would help to support that program. And then, uh, one hundred and ten thousand of the budget would be for what, what would be a mobile processing unit. And so again, this serves really two purposes. There's an enormous need for farmers to not have to travel long distances in order to access these processing spaces. Um, they're few and far between. You, they can't always get the product back that they want. They can't always get their whole animal back. Um, and so there's a lot of barriers for access for processing, especially for new and historically underserved farmers, um, accessing these processing spaces in order to increase their overall revenue, um, for their farm. And then secondarily, it opens up more local, uh, access to more local, locally raised, um, sustainably raised meat products um, for our community.
And then you're, when we send that to you in your note, in the note section, you'll get a link off to see pricing and what those mobile units actually look like, um, to see how those can benefit. The key element is, is that there are only two slaughter, uh, uh, companies, uh, facilities in Indiana. And so in, in our area, uh, someone like Lauren, who has sheep, has to travel, uh, with her animals to get them slaughtered, packaged, and then bring them out. And that's just a waste of time and money.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, so that's the mobile processing unit. Um, and then really the ARPA funds will help us to leverage, um, funds that we have received through the USDA under the LFPA grant, Local Food Purchasing, uh, Local Food Purchasing Assistance Grant. Um, and that was a one million dollar grant that we received and is, um, it is to purchase food specifically from historically underserved farmers, black and brown farmers are who we've contracted. And then that food is then given away for free to historically marginalized communities or those who are experiencing food insecurity. Um, not just in Monroe County, but in the entire southwest region of Indiana. Um, and now People's Market will be the lead organization for the southeast region as well. So the entire southern region of Indiana, forty-four counties that will be covering, um, to meet that need.
But we are specifically, the money we're at, we're asking you for would be specifically money for Monroe County, just to be clear. Um, but we are this other administrator for these other counties as well. So just to be very clear, we're talking about Monroe County.
And I'll tell you why.
It's in Monroe County.
So I'm the executive director of the Local Food Purchasing Assistance Grant, and Brandy is our value chain coordinator. And why does that matter? I'll tell you a story about Monroe County. When we did a standard deviation to find the highest number of BIPOC producers and the highest need in Monroe County. So we have a unique positioning, that we actually have some BIPOC producers here who could actually serve their communities if we were able to invest. And so that, what that tells me is that we actually positioning the county to really be a leader for the entire region. Why does that matter to you? Because there are farmers, not just in Monroe County, who want to help with the high need and the high yields that can come from us working cooperatively. Cooperative economics is just one part of it. It's also just a concept of sharing, the idea that we do better together. Cooperatives in general last longer. So instead of a small business where it's three to five years, coops on average last ten years. And in particular, women who cooperate together, our, our brains literally light up because we're experiencing the rewards of cooperation. So I really want to urge that point that as the executive director, I found out that Monroe County is the place to do this kind of investment. This is the place that farmers can come and be the middle ground between our more centralized and northern farmers and somewhere in the south. As you know, southern farmers are going to have food more often and for longer periods of time. Where are they going to process it in Monroe County? Where are they going to get their rentable mobile unit in Monroe County? Where are they going to get teaching and training from DNR, from the extension, from SER and the USDA? These are all the partners that we've already established. The LFPA is a national USDA program and we're one of the few states that are being operated by black farmers. So this is a historic moment for the county to start matching what we've already done. Matching our million isn't just about purchasing the food, it's about investing in our farmers. It's about saying yes to the idea that they need money preseason. And that's the cooperative, supportive agriculture that we want to convey. And so that's why you see this large increase.
So, uh, where I'm going to sit you around another document that is an increased document based upon the need that we are seeing in our community.
The majority of these funds that we're requesting from you would be matched. So I really want to emphasize the fact that even as it stands now, the forty-eight thousand dollars that you'd be giving would be matched because we have a million dollars. And so if you gave us in this new, uh, budget proposal, two hundred thousand dollars, all of it is match. When we think about going down the sheet, we get closer to this idea about a local food pavilion. And so we talked a lot of before about what it would mean to have year-round accessible space for not only vendors and producers, but also farmers to be able to access these training facilities. So there's also this concept that I really want us to understand that it's our community who's going to be owning this space. People's Market is just administrative, but we have done a great job of hearing from our partners. Our partners are telling us that when we bring them fresh, nutrient-dense food, that they have a huge response. One of which I'd like to read from Lynn's, the coordinator at Middleway House. One of the first places that we began to give food to, but more importantly, I will always get to Middleway House. Lynn says, "I find it especially moving that our clients know their fridges and special holidays are supported by local growers, real people in our shared community who are coming together to advocate and practice equity in a way that lands on dinner tables and in people's hands. That our clients are invited to be included in, and that is a cr- critical gift and reminder that they are not alone, that they are loved, that they are worthy of being nourished and that they are seen as a part of our community." I think that really illustrates our point. All of this money will be spent so that that happens more often, so that more five-on-one see-through and organizations who are serving our community don't have to search for another place to get their clients' needs met. We're bringing it to them. So in this extension, you're seeing at the bottom, especially an example about a local food pavilion, that's just one idea. But really, we're talking about creating a center, right? Where a lot of the processing, education and training, and then consumers can come together. I'm really excited about this project because I know that we're in a position to do something really big and that we have an opportunity to make change that has generational effects. And so knowing that a local food pavilion, a certified kitchen and a mo- mobile processing unit are just some of the tools, who we would actually be working together along the way with our partners to hear from them, what exactly is success?
And, and why, why does this matter in the, in the long run? Well, a- as we saw during the pandemic, that, uh, that the food chain supply is breaking down. That we had a lot of trouble getting products into town that were necessities, that were, uh, things you need every day. Every time we have a big ice storm in the winter, what, what goes first? Every time we have a big ice storm in the winter, what, what goes first in the, in the, in the pantries? And so uh you, we, when we think about creating spaces locally where this stuff is made locally, the chances of us running out of food now drops, right? And so this interplays with the concept of food justice. And and on your first sheet there at the back, there's a little description of food justice. Um, food justice is a twenty year area of study. And in twenty twenty three, literature review of ninety articles concluded that combining the social justice principles of dignity, self determination, equity, access and participation with environmental justice principles that emphasize participation, distribution and procedure, recognition and capabilities enables a broader and more contemporary conception of food justice. And how we specifically do that is through our, our actual farmers market, the CSA that we, we do every single week where you can buy and pick up the sponsored boxes, the donations to food pantries and distribution groups. And, you know, I'm going to take off my People's Market hat and put on my Black Lives Matter hat. Uh, normally I'm here at, at council meetings to disrupt and um tell you guys what to do. But I want to sha- share with you as a, as a Black Lives Matter person here in Bloomington, um, what People's Market has done for the families that we enact with. We have one family in particular that we have been serving since twenty twenty, once we, once we started that we have been giving food to every week. She gets about eighty five dollars worth of food. That's a bag of veggies and it's stuffed with seasonal veggies. Okay, it's around fifteen different products. She gets meat every week. She gets cheese every week. She gets eggs every week and she gets bread every week. All made locally, all grown locally, um, all natural, right? And so here is, she's a black woman, mother of three. She's deaf. She has three kids. She was raising them on her own. For after us giving her food for a couple of months, she was able to save enough money to get her hair done for the first time in years. So as a black woman, I just want to talk about what dignity comes with when you can get your hair done at the salon. Maybe other people take that for granted, that you can go get your haircut and colored, or you can go get your hair braided. But for a black woman, that's about dignity restored. That's about being able to move through your community with your head held high. And so since then, she's been able to do things like birthday parties for her kids. She's been able to get uh be able to get jobs, be able to make more friends, be able to do things that she couldn't do when worried about where food was coming from. And that's just one of our Black Lives Matter contacts that People's Market has been able to do in our community. And we would like to expand upon that. We would like to see more and more black families have access to fresh local nutrient dense food as a part of Black Lives Matter. And so working with People's Market in that has been a slam dunk for us. And so I think the last thing I want to say is you have these two different sheets. The first one is the, is the low ask. Don't think of the second one as the high ask. Think of it as if we had all of Elon Musk's money, we could maybe cure poverty and food insecurity in our world. But we do know that we can s- with this amount of money, we could start ending that in Monroe County. Ending food poverty in Monroe County.
Cause I want to be clear, we spent the million dollars. It's gone on our farmers. We gave it to them upfront. Because we believe in them and we invest in the things we believe in. So I want to be very clear, we are not generating funds. The money's not in a high yield account. We said, our farmers believe us and we believe in them. And I want us to make a bold statement to the producers of our community.
And I should say we're a volunteer run organization.
We are.
We are. We don't take home paychecks at the end of the day. They, they're working for LFPA and that's a separate concept, but People's Markets, we're on the ground every Saturday. We don't get paid to be on the ground every Saturday. If we have our own products to sell, we only get paid from our own products that we sell. So, and we've been a volunteer run organization with dozens and dozens of volunteers since twenty twenty when we started. So any questions?
Yeah, questions.
Wow.
That's not even half of it.
Brief overview. Your passion is contagious. I love it.
It's been, it's been a long ride, y'all.
Yeah. Yeah, all right. Um, questions to my right? Are there?
Yeah, which I think is probably a simple question. Uh, thank you. The um, the mobile processing unit, is that kind of a standard thing? Like, can you buy that off the shelf? Or is that something you're having to sort of design from? Do other people do that?
Yeah, so as a part of the Local Food Purchase, Purchasing Assistance Grant, we hosted the Black Loan Conference. So let's all pause and say thank you to Legacy Taste of the Garden because it is a historic civil, pre-civil war black settlement of farmers. And so Denise Greer, shout out. Yes, like moment. But Denise, because Denise gives us those resources. There's a school, Kentucky State University that came up and brought the mobile unit. And it's exactly what you said. They've figured it out.
Yeah.
Experts know what they're doing.
The work has been done.
The work has been done. But more importantly, as a response, USDA has a program specifically about mobile meat processing. And so they want to give us the money, right? And they want us to use it appropriately. And what we think should happen is that there should be multiple of them. We want to start with one and hear from our community about what they needed. But if we hear we need two or three, because there's so many farmers here, we would continue to ask for this funding and have it matched. So you'd be, you'd be the beginning of that change.
And and again, there are only two processing units in all of Indiana for all farmers in Indiana. So dry, and it's two hours away?
I mean, listen, yeah.
And so up your animals to get there. So having a unit that can drive out to your farm or is in a centralized location.
Right.
People can in, in Bloomington that they can truck into is a, a, a game changer for farmers.
And and there's complexity here too, because just because there are more than a few processors doesn't mean that I can get an appointment. That a small farmer who doesn't have fifty sheep
Right.
is going to get, that's who we're taught, that's what this mobile unit is for.
Right.
And so people less than fifty, less than hundred chickens can learn and train other farmers. So we can empower it. There's something empowering about being on your own farm.
Yes.
With your own animals and feeling like you're taking part in this whole process. So I really want to emphasize that like, this was a brilliant idea that a group of experts came up with, and they're trying to spread the word in the Midwest because we're dealing with a lot of shutdown. COVID killed a lot of meat processing.
Yes.
Um, yeah, facilities.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Hawk?
Uh, yes, uh, I attended a program not too long ago uh where it was being presented that there just wasn't enough meat processing places. And uh, and this happened to be someone who, who had a deer that needed to be processed. So it wasn't as if she was a farmer, but she, she had a terrible time trying to find a place and like keep ice down and whatever. I don't know. Uh, but i- is this only just for farmers or would that be also for for anyone who needed it?
Yeah, so there'd have to be different units because there's regulations on the animals. So poultry and sheep and goat can go together. Deer would be its own thing and then beef would be its own thing. And that's just the USDA and how they regulate things.
Right.
For that. So that's what we need three.
So nicely done.
That is the minimum need is three.
But I want to say clearly too, that the other regions of the LFPA have executive directors. And all of them also have groups of farmers who would want to rent this.
Yes.
This mobile unit. So we'd be kind of setting in motion a lot of other regional response to an ongoing issue. And I just want to bring in the complexity of brace here because dropping off your animals at a farm, where I'm the only black person there is not something I, I do. My husband does it for me. Because of that, because you have to go at six AM. People who don't know you, you don't know them. That's real.
In a, in a rural county.
In a county. So just keeping in mind that the, the barriers and deterrent may not be as straightforward as just the money. Because I, we've gone to place and they're like, no. So you just, you move on. Or you have a poor experience. So you never go back. And so now you're, you talk about two or three, now we got zero, right? Because there's just been so much discrepancy between small farmers and the facilities that do meat processing. They want to make their money. I get it. But we want sustainable access to local food.
With quality control.
Right.
So that's the other thing is that when you go to larger processing units, uh there's sometimes where you're not sure where you're getting your own animals back. Um, and that's, you know, if you, if you spend the money for expensive feed, you want your own animals back, right? Uh, and then also you may want all the parts of the animal so you can be fully sustainable and that processing um company does not want to give you all of the animal because that costs, that's more time for them. So they don't want to mess with it. So they give you the, the, the base cuts.
And that's that dignity part of for everything involved. You see, like, not just the consumer, but also our animals.
Right.
They deserve the dignity to not travel for hours and to be um.
And, and well, to be respected.
Yes.
Along the way.
Yeah.
Yep. More questions?
Counselor Iverson?
Uh, I have a couple of comments. First, uh, council member Hawk and I agree, we could not do what you're doing. So kudos to you. Uh, secondly, I feel like my brain tingles when I'm uh with you as well. So maybe not gender specific. Yeah, I know. Um, and the third thing that I wanted to point out was that um Courtney Mosher uh sent out um the first uh proposal via email. So everyone uh at this table uh has access to the link to the Google Doc, which outlines the difference pricing for, for what you laid out, which is super helpful.
And we'll send this other document out to you.
That would be great.
That's really helpful.
Yeah, yes.
Um, and I believe it went, this first one went to the commissioners as well. So we'll make sure that you get whatever update.
Okay.
Excellent. We get. Other questions this way? Counselor Crossley?
So, um, in terms of the mobile unit, um, I'm just, I'm not a farmer, so I trust y'all. Uh, so are, do you have somebody in mind and like that is responsible? Is that somebody that you would hire or is it amongst the farmers and you would kind of tag team? And go, how does, how does that work?
Cooperatively. We'll just have farmers come together, the USDA coming in and doing their licensing and making sure that every is just required. So we have okay, so that. So when you talk about hiring somebody, we're hiring the inspector.
Okay.
But we would own it cooperatively. So there would be a membership that people could join and they could rent this mobile unit either on farm or on site, whether, wherever we put it. But I think what's crucial here is that then farmers would be learning from each other how to do this. This is a workforce placement opportunity.
Right.
Small businesses are the number one hiring. That's who, that's who hires, small businesses. So if you think about farmers duly as producers, but also small businesses, this is just advantageous for really any group, but especially farmers because the rent, the ability to have inspection and then to sell into the USDA grant system.
Yes.
We have contracts with IDOH and the federal government. So we already have to do all this paperwork to be contracted with them. So why not share that with all of our farmers? They don't have to do it individually. We can do it together.
Okay.
And the other thing that I just wanted to say real quick is, um, I know earlier we heard four H and the community support and things like that as well and how some of the programs of four H are in some of the school corporations. Personally, I'd like to see something like this be a part of um school corporations. Um, in, in particular to help some of the students that are here to teach them about things. Cause I know um my children have gone to the Banneker Center here, and I know you Lauren have gone. And on Fridays, um, they would have bags that were lined up and they would have, you know, vegetables and things like that and and fruit, and it would never make it home because the kids would eat the fruit literally before we hit the front door. Um, and so I just, I just also want to say I appreciate all the work that you all continue to do. You won Women Excel Bloomington and it obviously shows.
There's some great.
I, I like, I, I, in all seriousness, like I'd, I'd love the idea of, you know, helping and, and doing something like this. Um, and I appreciate, you know, what People's Market have done. I've benefited from one a couple of weeks ago. Um, when I gone and still, yes. And so I, I just appreciate because you, we are able to help you, then you are able to help community and community can help. It's the gift that keeps on giving.
Yeah.
Um, so I just appreciate all of the energy that we have received from this presentation, but it, because it's definitely needed. Um, but yes, so I appreciate that. Um, and that's, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Deckard?
I just, I want to thank you for the passion that you're bringing. And I also want to say that as you're talking, what I hear is opportunity. And I start, I start looking at this in ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, thirty years. And in a community like this, that kind of vision is what makes things happen. The other thing is the track record that you have, and I got to watch this personally sitting in the passenger side of a car during twenty twenty People's Market effort. I mean, the line. And, and they're the juxtaposition. Let me throw this out for the members of the public who, who did not see it. Take the old East Side Kmart lot, and there we have a business that's left. And in the ruins of a business that's left, you have all these people lined up demanding to get into, not demanding, but they want, they were going to demand to get what they wanted and to get their needs and to help others. And you don't make that overnight and you don't make it easy. And so as I look at this, it's amazing, twenty twenty three, three years later, the pandemic's like my centering timeline. It's amazing in that time, kind of where this is going. And that kind of opportunity is not something you, you, you uh look away from. So I'm excited to see how this ends up and, and what we can do here. So thank you.
And I should say that, um, you know, we would like to welcome you all to come to People's Market on Saturday. We're in a new location this year. We've been there uh since November of last year, technically. Um, at uh First United Church. Uh, the First United Church is an all inclusive church. They're, they're welcoming and affirming church and they have graciously allowed us to be in their fellowship hall every Saturday, also in out, in their outside air, area every Saturday. So uh, we're there every single week and we have a share table where all of our, our farmers drop off all of their goods and we sell from the share table. And then our other vendors and farmers and um uh, uh, hot food vendors are there set up every Saturday. So you can get some good food from different cultural uh uh um communities. So we have tamales, we have empanadas, we have arepas, we have um all sorts of good Venezuelan baked goods as well. Um, and um, we always give out free coffee on Saturdays and um, there's all sorts of artisan goods, locally made artisan goods by someone like maybe me and other people in the community. And so um, we have grown a lot from that parking lot. Um, we've changed a lot from that parking lot. Um, and we have been continuously fighting the stigma of um, the other markets in the, in the community and making sure that our, our place is a true community place where people can talk about everything from political, social issues to uh somebody's nice braids to uh, you know, anything. Um, and we, we welcome discourse and we welcome um uh, the conversations around uh food justice in particular. So please come see us on Saturdays. We're there every week. From nine AM to one.
I was just about to say, can you tell us what time? Nine to one. Um, great. Um, other comments?
Any other questions about the proposal as it is? And about uh, uh, the finances and how, and the expansion in particular?
Yes.
Yeah.
So having a farm myself, and I used to raise cattle, uh, still raise chickens. And we used to have um ducks, geese, turkeys, sheep, pigs, the whole disaster. I appreciate the cooperative effort that you are putting together because the knowledge needed to take care of all, all the livestock. And to be good fruit and vegetable farmers is tremendous. No one person uh can learn this and everybody benefits when you, when you work together. And I sure do know this from, from my time uh, starting out. I learned, I learned from my neighbors. I'm concerned about uh, the mobile processing unit and what sort of health department requirements are going to uh be put in place for people to use this. How does it get a rep? How is it mobile? And also meeting the health department standards?
Well, the health department in particular will have to meet the new standards of the USDA. Because they're the ones that are going to inspect the place and tell them that it's fine. So it's more about the hierarchy of authority. So the USDA and the inspector will come to the mobile unit and tell them, yes, it's meeting standards. And if it's not, we'll have to adjust it. But if being mobile means that you can have on farm slaughter. So the home setting and the, the rights of a farmer come into play because you don't actually need the USDA inspector on your farm. But with the mobile unit, you'll have it. And that's the But with the mobile unit, you'll have it. And that's the biggest barrier to selling their products. So that's what we're trying to solve. So bringing it to their farm, that really isn't side stuff. But it answers a lot of the questions for the health department.
Okay. So we need a health department that is going to, uh, listen to the needs and wants of the community as well as listen to the USDA's recommendations.
This is their recommendation.
Right. Because we did have, we did have a couple of farmers who, uh, provided, uh, who processed meat. And it was especially difficult for, for beef. A lot of people did, did hogs at home, but beef is, beef is tricky. I only did that once. And, um, and they were closed down by, um, by some health regulation.
Well, and again, this is, this is the federal government's regulations. So the federal, federal governments have already checked all this out. They've already signed off on it. They will be a part of the process along the way. So any questions that the county has would need to therefore defer to the federal government on it. So these aren't, these aren't, we didn't invent this. This is, this is a partnership that the federal government has. So all of the, all of the concerns are solved through that.
Yeah. And just to be clear, we administered the LFPA grant through the Indiana Department of Health. So I plan on leaning on them hard.
Yeah.
I would make sure that we're doing all of that correctly. And it benefits them in the long run because the facility is closing during COVID. I want to be clear that we wanted to close all the facilities, but that's just what happened. Being concerned is then people aren't going to do any safety protocols at all.
That's right.
So they're trying to meet in the middle.
Yeah.
With the mobile unit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think that's all of our questions for you. And I think I mentioned before, we've got a lot of different projects to consider. But yours is very exciting. I agree with some of my colleagues who, um, indicated that the potential here for changing lives and improving our community. You know, really at a, at a base level is, is impressive. So thank you and be sure to send us the second document.
I have to plug one more thing.
Okay.
So in the meantime, while you're making decisions.
Yes. The things that we do.
Which I appreciate, by the way. Um, Bloomington has chosen us as the roundup for July.
Yay.
So you can at least talk about.
Yeah.
Cause we would continue this even without.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
It's necessary.
Yeah.
But if you can continue to talk about, educate others, that's what the roundup is for. The Bloomington Foods does buy local food and it is a cooperative.
I was gonna say one co-op to another.
One co-op to another that you can invest in just rounding up.
Yeah.
Shopping at Bloomington Foods, you can buy gift cards for People's Market. But also the, the biggest benefit for us is the relationships. And so we want to build relationships with all of you and our community in a really meaningful way.
And you can always donate to People's Market.
You gotta tell them that's.
But always donate to us and that helps us in particular with our sponsored boxes. And the last thing I'm going to say is we're talking about, uh, boosting, uh, Monroe County businesses. We're talking about, uh, trying to come to an end of, 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 of food poverty in our community. And we're trying to also, uh, boost, uh, BIPOC businesses and BIPOC involvement in, um, food and food justice in our community. So it's not just a win-win. It's a win, 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 win. Right? Like it just, it keeps, it keeps going. So that's, that's the key thing to remember.
The pinball of winning.
Yeah.
All the way.
All the way. A bun, it's a bun.
Thank you. Uh, really appreciate your time. Thanks. Okay. Love that energy. We have lots. Did we lose Jeff? Oh, there you are. No, poor Jeff. He's hanging tight.
I, what, um, what I haven't, uh, been just kind of piggybacking off of what they've talked about. Um, Laura McCallister and JDB, um, we talked about doing barricades so they could have an open market. And so that still hasn't been approved for ARPA. So that's still out there.
I would.
Just a reminder.
Propose that we combine those when we.
If it's still necessary.
Yeah, exactly.
The other thing, um, is that they both mentioned to me that, that the fees for small producers to you, to attend markets was too expensive. And so we heard that on the Board of Commissioners and we reduced the fee for multiple markets. Um, so when there's a small farmer, small producer, they can attend multiple markets for less than in, in the past. And so that starts in 2024. So we're really proud of that.
Be for, so the health department. Got it. Okay.
So we've done that. So, uh, thank them for their input.
Yeah.
And we have a couple of quick additional items that, um, we, um, did not cover yet from our office. There it is. Okay. So we have two proposals and I'm going to have Commissioner Giffens talk about the gun safes. But, um, the, uh, Hoosier Hills Food Bank, uh, needs money for food. Simple as that. Um, but Commissioner Giffens, if you're still online, I, I think you might want to talk about the gun safes.
Sure. Thank you. Um, one of the things that we've heard recently locally is that theft of, um, handguns out of vehicles has been increasing. And, um, so as we work with people to reduce gun violence around the community, we'd like to have a way to provide gun safes that are for handguns that are, are in cars right now. And perhaps other larger safes, but right now the focus is on, uh, for handguns. And so, and also to provide, if it's necessary, we don't know this yet. We're still investigating. But provide money for extra gun locks because they make a huge difference. Um, I think some of you have heard me say that last, um, Halloween, uh, Halloween on the square, Moms Demand Action gave out 100 gun locks on Halloween, which is not when you expect people to be stopping and talking to you about these things, right? But so I think that there is an interest in the community to support folks. Uh, we know that gun deaths are the largest, I'm sorry, I'm going to break up here. More children die as a result of guns than any other cause in the United States right now. And so the goal is to help reduce overall gun deaths, but also to protect those who are most vulnerable in our community. So that's why we've put this proposal in the ARPA, um, request. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've got two things, um, if there are any questions or comments from council.
I was just gonna say, um, for the gun safes, I know that there's a new initiative that's, um, happening and more details are coming. And myself along with, um, Commissioner Giffens are a part of that. And so that's something that we are trying to work on together, um, as well with that. Cause I know the conversation was if there could be a way that we can fund some of these gun locks to have for gun sales to give to people who are purchasing them. Um, to give to, you know, for safe storage and things like that, that would be very helpful. Um, and to provide context of the gun thefts, um, BPD, and I believe the Sheriff's Office did say that the reason why those are on the rise is because we have people that are leaving their guns in their cars with the car unlocked. So that in itself is very scary. So if there is something that we can do, um, to help alleviate some type of, uh, the issue that we see here. Um, and potentially save lives, um, you know, who's to, that, that would be ideal. So I appreciate the work that is being done together collaboratively with that.
Definitely. And, and we are working with Moms Demand Action on that. So I appreciate what you're adding to the conversation here, Counsel Crossley. I'd also like to throw in one quick thing too about the Hoosier Hills Food Bank. Um, I was out there a couple of weeks ago during their, uh, Fresh Friday drive-through. And, um, families were requesting diapers and pull-ups. And so the commissioners have started a diaper drive so that on the next two, uh, drive-throughs on July the 14th, and I think it's August the 11th, that we will be offering to families no charge. Diapers, pull-ups and wipes. And we have a, uh, Hoosier Hills Food Bank barrel sitting in the rotunda of the courthouse. So anybody who's listening, who is able to donate, please do bring that in. There is a need in the community. I've been out there all four years that they've been doing these drive-throughs and this is the first time that we've heard this request from families.
Right. Are there other council comments or questions about those two items? Okay. There were other items on our list that, um, that we had discussed, or at least I had mentioned to.
So we, so yeah, there are two projects specifically listed on the agenda. Um, so we have Ms. Ridge here to talk about bicentennial pathway and Mr. Fockrell here to talk about the community foundation.
Right. And we also.
One more that I'd.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we also have, um, the broadband concept that we wanted to talk about, um, which I think is what you're probably mentioning. Um, and then a few other ones that we had on our list. Do you want to go ahead and do broadband?
Sure. And I don't want to belabor this too much, um, just because it is, it's already late and it's could be much later. But I, I, I would really like to see a project on the list that would essentially be establishing a Monroe County broadband infrastructure program. And this is something where we would earmark an, an amount of money. I'm thinking somewhere between half a million and a million dollars. We wouldn't, you know, we don't know all the details right away. We would have to commit to earmarking it before we know all the details. But the money wouldn't actually be spent until the council and the commissioners came to agreement on, on those details. But the goal would be to, you know, to provide broadband access to residents outside the incorporated areas that are not currently served by broadband using the state's definition. And I think we, we could come up with a program that would A, be technology neutral. Um, so that it could be fiber coax, even, even Starlink for some locations. Respectful of investments that existing providers have already made in infrastructure. And then also that would be particularly sensitive to leveraging opportunities. Uh, for example, using the new Internet for All program that was just, uh, just announced. Um, you know, that may not be soon enough for some residents who really need internet access. But I think there's some opportunities for leverage. And so the, this program consists of two parts briefly. First of all, we create a broadband infrastructure task force. Uh, this has been determined to be the best practice for communities in Indiana wanting to establish world broadband. Um, you know, I brought this up, uh, some years ago and I, it hasn't gone anywhere. And I think we really need to move forward on it. And then second, we establish a broadband infrastructure grant program where homeowners who were unserved would apply to the program and would be encouraged to organize their neighbors who are also unserved to apply. And so the idea is let's put our efforts where the demand is greatest. Uh, and there'd have to be of course, an outreach effort to tell the, uh, community what, you know, what, what the opportunities are and what they would need to do. Maybe the, uh, outreach through the trustees. And the idea is once the application period is over, that we would actually work with existing providers and even encourage them to sort of bid on, uh, serving the locations. And that bid could, can, you know, could consist of their own investment and money from the federal government, from the state and from our own, uh, our own money as potential match. But, and then the, the, the panel, the, the task force would essentially review the, um, the applications and kind of just with the goal of serving the most people, the, the most house, the most residents uh, in the community with the amount of money available. So that's in short, you know, there's a ton of details. Some of us are going to a broadband workshop that the state is offering. Um, some that Ms. Purdy may have already been to, I don't know, did you already go to one of them?
Yeah, I went to the one at Crane and then, uh, Mr. Giffens and I are going up tomorrow. Are you going to that?
I'm going to go.
Not tomorrow.
Yeah.
It's been a long night.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, but I, yeah, I'm, I'm hoping to, and I think Counsel Munson may be going as well. So there's, there's definitely some details, but I, I think we need to take a stand and tell the community that we're willing to put some, uh, investment in, in broadband.
And then I don't know if you are aware, I just wanted to kind of piggyback onto this, um, because of the meeting I went to in Crane. Um, you know, there's 42.45 billion dollars that the federal government has made available. And they're going to allocate that, uh, across all of our state. And they're estimating around 600 million dollars funds will come to the state of Indiana. And Monroe County is already identified as, uh, a county in need. Um, we have a lot of gaps in our, um, in our service area. And, uh, the states and the federal government, I believe it is, I might be wrong on. Who, but, um, BEAD, which is the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program is in play. And that's for people who cannot, um, afford, but have access to it. Cause you know, there's multiple issues with broadband and one of them is you might have access to it, but you can't afford to use it. The other issues that the state is really wanting to know is what is your access like? Because, just because they say they, you have access, doesn't mean you can watch a movie. It doesn't mean you can, you know, be on your computer or your spouse or whoever and other things can be done. Or in some instances, your neighbor's on the, the internet that you can't be on. And so, um, there is actually a map, um, that they're working on that you can go on and see what kind of, uh, services available and what type you. I, I only, I looked at it real briefly just before this meeting. And, and so on Friday, one of the first things I want to say is the map's terrible because.
It's not.
Because I, I don't, because I'm moderately happy, I think, um, but not the worst, I'm not the bad. Um, but I think there's a lot of people who are on my level or less, and they're going to find it really difficult to get the information they want on the, from this map and be able to communicate to the state or to the federal government as to what their access and availability really is. So anyway, um, I still have an upcoming, um, Cheryl, that I'm going to do a little synopsis of my Crane event. However, I have, it's not happened. So I will do it though, and I will share it with obviously my commissioner and you guys also. Um, and one last thing I want to, you know, that somebody, um, said, they, Drew, did you, did you talk about someone hiring like?
Yes, I did. And I mentioned that.
Okay. So it all fits together and hopefully this will come back and have a, I can speak more now.
Yeah. And, and that's the sort of thing that this program, that this allocation, you know, could, could spend money on, on a consultant to help. And I think, I, I really think that broadband infra, community broadband infrastructure task force is really important too. This isn't something that should be handled out of the commissioner's office or the council or anything. We, we should be working with people who, you know, who know what they're, what they're talking about here. And, and, and yeah, I'm really glad you brought up the, the, um, federal program. It looks like they upped the money to 868 million for Indiana.
So, um.
So there's going to be resources available.
Actually, is it this, Friday, 30th, the 30th?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, decide how much. There's going to be some decisions made on funding that's going to be available. Um, and then we kind of have to hear what they sort of provide for us. How we can move forward, but I think that it fits completely with what all you guys are.
But right, you can't just provide a map and have people go in and find what's, I, I, yeah, I.
No.
Yeah. If you don't have connectivity to get to this map, come on in and mark it up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, well, I, I, I agree. I think this is a, this is a very important, um, initiative. It's a good use of, of ARPA funds. Um, there are a lot of people, it could really help. Are there questions or comments on the project as it's described?
I think a task force is a really good idea. There are so many pockets in Salt Creek Township and Benton Townships.
Yeah.
Where it's just, it's just so rough in those, in those areas to, to get access. So I love, this is a good idea.
Yes.
What I, I would add, I appreciate what Counsel McKim was saying and also, uh, we, we've talked about this a long time. Clearly the providers are not going to fill in those spots without somebody doing. And this is precisely in history, what it, you know, people say can't run government like a business. And this is a good example. Business is not going to those gaps. So I guess we will. I, I just think we had. I, I just think we have to think of it like that. TVA, you name it. There are places in this country that would not have phone lines, uh, ag things, electricity. Had government not stepped in, this is the new utility.
Yeah.
Drive roads, yeah, yeah, you name it. No.
So we do have government still very involved with, uh, with broadband and that is R E M C in many rural areas. And, uh, we're not getting from the R E M Cs what we need to get. And they are right, that Congress sets everything up for what they do. And they are so-called, um, we are all owners of, we are in the R E M C area. But I don't see that the, the customers really have, have much effect on what, how they operate.
Yeah, there's, like you said, a lot of details to navigate, I think.
And moving part, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
The ground is shifting.
It's not, it's not super clear. But it's, it's worth investing in, I think. Um, other questions or comments from the commissioners? Anyway, no, okay. Okay, um, there were other potential projects. Um, some of which I think we can hear about at the next meeting. Um, including, I believe Centerstone has, um, some ideas around, um, supportive housing and some other, um, opportunities for mental health, um, services. And, um, we had also talked about, well, a lot of other things that I'm not entirely sure are, are on the list. So maybe we could make a more complete list of, of what Commissioner's Office has been thinking and, um, what we've been looking at. Um, because honestly, I thought we had shared documents and were, were able to have, um, you know, more of a comprehensive list today. Yes.
Oh, I just want to say that, um, I think that it's a really good idea, um, to put, you know, all of these together, obviously, of course. But the brief meeting that we had with Baker Tilly prior to this was extremely informative. And so I do think that, um, we need to get, um, a better understanding of what truly how we need to, um, set up the programs, if you will, for some of these projects. There's a lot of things that we have on, on here, or I could say a lot of things, but there's a, uh, one I know that needs to be or should be used on pay for from the loss revenue and not the ARPA funds themselves. So I think that we get a little carried away sometimes because, um, I can, well, we haven't started the conversation about the bicentennial trail. But in conversations with, um, Baker Tilly, uh, the water of the Washington Township, that can be paid from the water sewer septic side of, um, the ARPA funding. The rest of it really needs to come from the lost revenue. So we need to really be cognizant of.
Of where the buckets.
Yeah. Is that how, what we have to do in order to, um, meet the criteria for the use of the fund?
Um. Okay, so I, I, will there be a, I mean, I got, I know we got the two memos. Is that kind of summarize that concern or the, those discussions? Okay, um. Yes.
If I can get a complete project list of what is being considered, I'm happy to forward that on so they can, you know, look through and give us some ideas.
Yeah, they were going to go through our list and, um, identify, you know, if, if this thing is be, if we needed to be able to show impacted or any, um, what's the other word? Some other kind of impact.
Oh, disproportionately or.
Some things don't have to show that kind of impact, um, but we need to be a lot more in line. We need to know more about what the requirements really will be for the federal audit when they come to look at it. So an example would be the rural transit buses that we purchased. Rural transit does in fact serve, um, a, a, a lower, a, a population that's in need. The buses that we gave them, we did not give those buses to the population in need. We gave them to the entity. So either, um, the entity needs to provide us information showing how they were, um, impacted by COVID. And as such, and, and that they needed these buses in order to be able to help people get out and, you know, have things that they need to do. And that, that these buses help make them whole, that we need that information or we just take them out of the lost revenue. So I just want to put some caution out there because I feel like we learned a bit, um, about, um, kind of how the money is going. We, we tend to be thinking of this per, this entity does this great work. You know, they are serving these people in need, um, you know, and, and we forget and don't recognize and have, we have, it's not any, we just all did it, right? You know, we people provide this great service to people in need. However, we need to think about, is it a grant to them? Are we, you know, and we don't really want to do a grant to them because then that becomes a whole other reporting nightmare on a federal government grant kind of level. So I just, I'm just wanting to throw that out there that we're asking them to give us a more clear, um, direction as to how we need to support these projects and be able to defend them, um, with the.
Okay. Okay, um, well, that, that's great. I'm all about like getting it right, out of the right buckets. I think that's, um, extremely important. Um, and some of these, I'm not sure how this, we'll, we'll just, we, we can, I can talk with you, Bree. I know that most of what we have, I think you've seen at some level, even if it's a four-word idea. So I think that's probably.
I think as, um, maybe we can talk a little bit later this week and get, I can send the list I have and make sure it's complete between all of us.
That'd be great. Yeah, thank you. So let's look at, um, unless there are other projects that you want to talk about right now. Let's move to the, um, item eight B. Um, the highway department's ARPA request. Believe it or not, I think you have some, I think we have a motion maybe.
Okay.
Is it on script?
I don't know.
It's highway, correct? Counsel, I moved to approve the highway department's request for new count line three, seven, four, one, eight. Bicentennial Pathway Construction and Fund eight, five, eight, nine, pardon me, five, zero, 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 ARPA.
Okay, I'll second it. I don't love this project.
Well.
Patience, Ms. Ridge. Anyways, patience.
Hey, just for the record, I did try to move this up in the order of discussion.
Appreciate it. It's okay.
All right. Um, could you?
I was at Sample Road this morning for a walkthrough, so, but anyway.
That I love, that project I love.
Well, since you say that, all my local road and street money went to like projects like Sample Road to get those finished. So I'm at the end of the string of projects that started in two thousand nine. Um, I sent you guys all an email pretty detailed where it began, where it's at today. Every dime that I've had in my budgets, which equals about nine point five in construction funds, that doesn't count right away, P E. I haven't asked for a dime. I have asked for paving funds, um, over the past year. That's the only thing that I've come to the council for, for extra funding. The reason for that is big, again, local road and street budget has gone to get all of these projects, projects finished. Hunter's Creek Road that started in two thousand eleven, Bicentennial Pathway, it started in two thousand nine. Uh, Sample Road that was started in two thousand fourteen. We are at the end of getting these projects complete. We're doing a final walkthrough on Hunter's Creek, July tenth. We did a pre-walkthrough on Sample Road, phase one and phase two today. Uh, we hope to close that out by the end of the year. And, and we're here at Bicentennial Pathway. Did I think that we would ever see all of these projects and not lose front for funding? No, I did not. I told Jeff that in two thousand sixteen. I don't know how I can afford these projects. I feel like after the millions, multi-millions that's been spent on infrastructure in Monroe County, to just come and ask for seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars is minimal to what we've built.
It is.
It's.
It is.
It is.
I think I.
And, and in, and in an effort to help, and I know that, I don't know why Jeff doesn't like this. I'm not entirely sure. But again, you know, this heads, this project has, the costs have been exponential in, in how it's gone up. And in, in, you know, Lisa's email note that she sent to everybody, you know, she reached out to me in December of last year. And I was just like, you know, I was like, well, what are we going to do? Right? So in dot calls and lets her know that it's got some additional funding, which we need did to get the project done because it's so, um, expensive just on its own. And if we didn't take it, we're going to lose everything so far. And so like, yeah, we'll, we'll make it happen. And so right at the beginning of the year, without it being anything planned, we were able to, we took that out of Q. All of this paid in Q. Everything for this project is paid in Q if it's not covered by the federal grants or the, all the other things. And so we have already spent like nine hundred fifty-three thousand or something or like January.
On our, that was our construction match, nine twelve, I think.
Okay, yeah. And, um, now, now we have this additional seven hundred and some thousand that comes, that comes to play. And, um, we, I will say that we did think, because I really didn't know what I was going to do with Q and that kind of hit for it to pay, for this project. And, um, it was like, okay, so ARPA is, they talk about stormwater and this project, we'll see what's left. It's a lot of drainage, is my understanding, not my area.
No, and I, I know the question has been raised on how this helps stormwater. Our stormwater crews every single day do ditching, replacing pipes. And that's what this project consists of also. They're ditching almost two miles of roadway to improve the drainage in the area. They are replacing, uh, driveway pipes. They're putting in, uh, box culverts. That is all stormwater related items that our crews do on a daily basis. So to say that it doesn't fit stormwater, um, I think is, um, not correct. Uh, we're not using, you know, stormwater funds to fund this whole project. We're just using a portion of ARPA funds. The main portion came from Q cap. So yeah, do we have probably seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars worth of, uh, just stormwater improvements in that project? Absolutely. You could, um, look at the money that we spend on, uh, infrastructure projects for stormwater or a step road project or a Moore's Creek Road project, Cherry Lane that we just did. So yeah, stormwater definitely ties into the overall project. The list that we provided to get to the end of this didn't say stormwater. I get that. But we've already used our match, things like that towards this overall project to get where we're at today.
Well, and then I just want to piggyback on that, um, in our, my brief conversation with, uh, Baker Tilly. And that is, this is an old project, right? So it goes back to two thousand nine. And so we can't really show that this is something that, I think there was a twenty twenty, um, initiation date or something. Um, however, these new additions do are new. They are not, they were not part of the original project that we're having to, to fund now. And so, you know, as Baker Tilly said, you know, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand or whatever the number is. You know, not a lot when it comes to your loss revenue. If that's where, um, they would recommend that we look at that, that you look at that.
How's that? Okay. Um, so their recommendation is to, is lost revenue?
Yeah, um, there was, I, I gave them my sheets and so I don't have my numbers now, but two hundred and some sixty-five thousand, I think it was, um, is for the Washington Township laying the pipes. And he said that's completely appropriate, completely under the ARPA. So that portion of it could easily be paid from the, the regular ARPA fund, if you will. And then the, um, the remainder can go. Thank you. Yeah. So then the four hundred for the paving and striping, construction inspection, and then the additional design, twenty thousand, those should go under the loss revenue. So for five hundred thousand, the other seven, the other two, two sixty-eight out of the regular ARPA. If I request, I request, and, and Lisa and I are tag teaming this because it's in the commissioner's.
Right.
Uh, Kim, Kim Cap fund.
So I guess my, I was surprised that it was an ARPA request at all. And.
Was that about because of stormwater? So that's how it came about because it was all the storm.
It was stormwater and that's specifically called out.
Right, that's, that's, that's where that came from.
I mean, I, my understanding from the communications is that these are bills. We have to pay them. I mean, this is a project that's got to be finished and I don't think there's an argument around that at all. We have to figure out how to pay them and that's fine. I think the conversation maybe is more around, is it an ARPA project? Or is it something that we need to pull out of somewhere else?
Yeah.
And.
And that's entirely.
I'm open to suggestions, but I mean, that's at least what I'm thinking. Counselor Iverson.
Well, and I did want to talk about that for a little bit because in, in the letter that you sent, um, Lisa, you did recommend an alternative to say that it is possible that we can hold off on the paving until twenty twenty-four if those costs can be budgeted for paving and striping. So as I'm looking at the outstanding costs that you had enumerated, the paving and striping that you're referring to is that four hundred thousand dollar cost, right?
It is. The, the issue with that is, uh, the, the paving contract, the paving portion that is in the contract, it could not include the whole road because it was using transported, transportation enhancement funds. Yeah. So we could not include the paving of the whole road. However, there will be a contractor onsite July, um, tentatively on their schedule to do the paving on the new bicycle shoulders. So we have it out for bid. That is to be opened this Thursday. If that contractor gets that is the low bid, they will want to try and work that in, into this project and do it and be done and not come back in spring. That would be our hopes too. We hope we, we can get a good price. Uh, we put in there that it could be tentative as a contractor not getting the notice to proceed until spring, April of two thousand twenty-four. That's if other contractors are the low, low bid. So I'm, I'm, our engineer estimate was more in the three hundred and one thousand dollar range. I put four hundred because you just don't know. But again, I feel that we should get a good, good bid, but then that would have to be this year because it would, could be the same contractor. We're just trying to do different ways to save funding on it.
Sure.
Counselor McKim.
And I, I, I just want to say, first of all, my issues with this program or this project are the, are philosophical. They're not about your execution of it. Your execution, you know, we've talked about this. Your execution is extraordinary. And I, and we certainly know that we have to pay our bills and we have to complete the project and we don't want to give money back to the Fed. So, you know, not, not going to even. not, not gonna even suggest that, that. My concern is that I don't think it'll improve bicycle safety because it's basically widening a road and it's gonna it, the bicycle lanes are not separated. They're just separated by paint and it's gonna encourage cars to go faster. So that, that's my issue. But I get it that we, we need to finish it. So.
I can't say it's one of my favorite projects.
Yeah.
Oh, mine.
Yeah.
And just to kinda add to what Counselor McKim has said, one thing Lisa always has done. We've talked about numerous times, but it bears repeating, particularly with people watching at home. She's routinely brought dollars home to the community, maximize those dollars, figured all those things out with contractors. And does it, you could write the textbook and it's, it's awesome and it's always appreciated. In fact, she would probably not admit to this by teaser a lot that if we put her in a meeting, maybe money comes home for the county. And so that's our secret. She's got, she's the most popular Monroe County official over in Indianapolis. She should hold on to that as long as she can.
Yeah. Well, and I think that goes kudos to a council that backs your projects because if you lose the projects, they don't give you, they you're not gonna get your projects completed. They're not gonna keep giving it to you.
Sure thing.
So they do see that Monroe County finishes.
Yeah, we do have to pay your bills.
And I guess I'd look back to the commitment letter that I mentioned to you that was um signed in two thousand fourteen, almost ten years ago. And I understand it was previous elected officials, but however, we did present that commitment letter to NDOT and and a NOFA application, I'm to assume that committed Monroe County to at least one point one million. And you know, we're not much above that and it's ten years later.
Yeah.
So we're satisfying our commitment that we originally made in two thousand fourteen. And we just wanna, I mean, basically get to the finish line with it. And when Angie and I started looking at the numbers, um, and we just knew we needed assistance and however we could get it, I don't look at anybody else's budgets but my own. And so.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, other questions or comments? Yeah.
So I just thought of this project that it was not a good fit for ARPA. And um because I didn't see uh that it had a lot, a lasting uh benefit to a large number of people. That's what I'd like to think our, our best projects will be doing. But I agree, we do have to pay our bills and what we take from one pot to pay for another, we end up just stirring everything together. So.
So is, so the question, the, the motion is ARPA. Do we want? Do we, would there be other suggestions? But how else would we do it?
To know.
Would there be, I mean, general fund, rainy day? I mean, I don't.
So on half a dozen.
Exactly. I mean, although ARPA is more restricted. So I mean, yeah.
Although it sounds like we're being asked to use the unrestricted portion.
Yeah, of ARPA, yeah.
Oh, I see.
That there's a timeliness in this decision, right?
Can I, I, yes. So what I would propose is if this could be approved and that way we could, if we get an invoice, we can pay it. But if council wanted to consider another pot, um funding source, we can always make corrections. So that we're not.
How does that? We switch from one pot to another.
If it hasn't been paid yet, you can always pay it out of a different source.
Right, yeah, you just make the correct, yeah, you would have to make the appropriation and, and then we would have to do the correction.
I mean, I'm okay. I, you know, I'm, I've got it out of my system.
All right, well, we should, then we should um go ahead and, and vote. Um, but I believe this needs to be, oh, needs to have public comment for anyone still awake. Yeah. All right. Um, and I think we have to do a roll, roll call vote on this one.
Okay.
I know. It's been all night. We haven't had a roll call vote, but here we are.
I guess our looks of puzzles, our puzzled looks are, can you clarify what we're doing the roll call on? Is it to account, create the new account line? Because the motion doesn't contain a request for appropriation.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well, that's a, that's a.
Can you, can, can you add, go ahead.
Oh, let me see if I can rattle around and then somebody help me out.
We have, we have an, we have appropriation advertised. I just, it's, it's advertised separately. I think that we would like to have Counselor Deckard amend the motion.
Yeah, we sure would.
And it will remain the same, although it will, it will include an appropriation of seven hundred fifty five thousand nine hundred dollars in ARPA. And I have to look for the, this will be in the services category?
Yes, it's, it's in the thirties, yeah, services.
All right, children try this. We'll see how it goes. We might be here till Monday. Get comfortable, counsel. I moved to amend my previous motion to simultaneously appropriate seven hundred fifty five thousand nine hundred dollars in ARPA under the services category. And the original motion is notwithstanding.
Second.
And create an account at the same time.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second now and we've had lots of discussion, but I think we have to vote on it being amended. So, um, does the amendment need to be a roll call as well, since it's an appropriation?
No, do the amendment as a voice vote.
Okay, all in favor of amending the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Excellent, that passes. Is there any more discussion on the fully amended motion? Seeing none. Oh, any public comment?
When's our food order coming?
Really seeing that?
Monday.
I would like a roll call vote, please.
It's clarity, the roll call is to create a new account line and to approve the additional appropriation. We're on the same page. Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wels?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you guys so much. All right. We we are um now at eight C.
Counsel, I move to approve the commissioner's request for a new account line and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in fund eight nine five zero 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 American Rescue Plan Act in the amount of one million two hundred thousand in the services category.
Second.
Okay, a point of order, sorry. Did we do eight C?
That's, that's what we're on. All right, sorry, we're on. Sorry, yeah.
No, we skipped that. I'm done for tonight.
I, I'll try to be brief. When we did the, when we had a request for the heading home plan, it requested to one point mil, to one point two million dollar buckets. One bucket was for the direct implementation for the first three, I think first three years of the of the plan for, and I'm not gonna go into detail about the heading home plan. I, I think we're a little late in the evening for that. Uh, the second was, was the fund of one point two million in endowment so we can continue that program on into the future. Uh, due to state law, we're not allowed to do that endowment function, but I think the community foundation feels strongly enough that they want to. And so in order to do that, they're asking for our support to help them fund uh one point two million dollars in some of their other grant program. And so what, what the MOU will say once it's written, if you guys approve this, is that we would have, the county would have the ability to approve the grant guidelines, which will work with the council and the commissioners as well as our friends at Baker Tilly to make sure it includes everything we need. And then that way we would help them fund some of the projects so that they could, that would enable them to, to do, to work on the heading home plan. So that is the basics of this request.
Will, will the end result be that the community foundation has an, a heading home fund of one point two million dollars?
That is the plan.
Other questions?
Well, I, I guess, and Jeff, I had already said this to you. I, I guess I was kind of surprised to see this request come uh in this form. Uh, I don't, I mean, we don't really have any, any documentation of any kind. There was nothing in the packet. I guess. I guess it just seems premature to me to come as an appropriation. But maybe my count, my college, maybe you guys know a lot more about.
But no, not necessarily.
Was, was this the list of projects that was circulated last meeting?
Well, circulated is probably not the right.
Right, sure.
But I think what that was, was an example of things they'd done in the past to kinda give people feel for, hey, here's, here's potential. Well, well, what we'd be looking at if, if we're going again. The, the proposal today is just moving forward. These grants have not been issued. Uh, the grant guidelines, I think we also had an example of last year's grant guidelines that are things to go by. And I, and I will tell you right now, if you guys wanna table this to July, great, let's just if you guys are comfortable voting, great. If not, let's.
And so Baker Tilly has not seen this yet, or they have seen this yet?
I believe they're aware that this is a potential project, but it was not on the update I gave them, obviously, because it's not been obligated.
And we don't have one of their new fangled memos on this.
We do not. Um, this is something they will be working on in the future, the near future.
Will they be seeing this soon in order to kind of vet the process?
I anticipate sending them a complete list um this week before the end of the week.
List being proposed.
Potential proposed projects.
Potential, okay.
I would sure feel much more comfortable if we had something in writing and at this point had a memo from Baker Tilly. Counsel, I move we uh continue this item to the July uh twenty fifth county council meeting.
Second.
Okay, any, yeah, right, any discussion about the tabling? Okay, um, public comment on said tabling? Am I doing this right? Okay. Can I do a voice vote on tabling? Yes. So all in favor of tabling this to the July work session, session, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Item is tabled. We are on number nine, which is ARPA appropriations. But we don't have anything specifically that we've decided to do based on our earlier discussions. And the purpose of this item was simply to be able to appropriate. It served that purpose.
It, as a vehicle.
There we go. So, um counsel, I move that we skip item nine and move to item ten.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we are at item ten. Um, welcome back, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes. Item ten is something we do every year, right? We get a, we get the compliance forms. This is for tax abatements. We get the compliance forms from the company on May fifteenth. We, the council then asks forty five days to look at them and then they could do nothing, in which case the abatement rolls on it. As it is, they can approve them in case the abatement rolls on as, as it is expected to, or they could be denied, in which case I believe it starts some hearing process that where we would reach out to the company and we would, we would have them come in. Each year, we have the Economic Development Commission review these. Again, they're part of the process of issuing a tax abatement. They're the investigatory body for these kind of things for the county. Uh, we met last, or they met last Friday. They recommended approval of all these tax abatements. Um, I'm gonna go through them fairly quickly. Uh, and hopefully for the first one I have on the list is Bioconvergence. This is a, a, a abatement we've had a long time. Hopefully you got some information that I, that I handed off to the that were basically your minutes from two thousand seventeen that I have always thought was the best expression of what why they are low. It's essentially they had local competition. So they didn't put a line in to do a different, a line of work because they didn't wanna compete with a, a local business. Um, so their employment numbers are down, their investment numbers also down to kind of reflect that, not including that they made the case to the council a while ago and, and it was accepted. Uh, the next one is Ecolot, Eco Logic. They have exceeded both their job totals and their total wages that were on the statement of, of benefits. Um, Proveli Inc. or Proveli LLC. They had increased by thirty two workers, you know, on the statement of benefits and there's, and it was estimated that they have fifty workers. I called the company to kind of figure out what's going on, mostly because last year they, they had thirty five workers and so it, it was a reduction. Um, they indicated that they're simply having trouble hiring people, that they still have open job applications out. They, they, he indicated his philosophy was to uh try to pay above the market. And so he was saying, and, and so he was asking me questions about, hey, how, what, what resources we have to help like with job fairs and things like that. So I directed him to the BEDC. Um, because they are much more in line with that, but he was very responsive. He, he expressed that they're really trying to get more people. They're actually contemplating expanding their facility in, in the county. And so, you know, based upon that, like, that, that information, the EDC indicated that that they would recommend approval of that. Um, I think the last one is Phoenix closures and Lazarus LLC. This is really the same company. One is the real estate portion and one is the personal property portion of the abatement. Uh, they, their abatement document. Make sure I get the date right. Uh, they, their a, a, actual completion date was twelve one twenty twenty two. Um, that was a new facility that had no um employees before they came in. It's the, it's on the old Otis site. And so that right now they're at sixty three uh employees. They had indicated that they were going to have an estimated seventy three employees at the end of the day. Their, and their salaries of those sixty three employees are about a hundred and six thousand below what they had anticipated when they first applied of seventy three people. Employee salary, and they're still hiring. I mean, they, they're, they're looking for more people as well. So the EDC was comfortable recommending approval of all these taxpayers. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Are there questions about the recommendations on these um abatements?
Yes.
Yes, I just, I'd see if the EDC had any particular points of discussion, concern, lines of questioning that are of note.
I, I, I think with the explanation for Proveli Inc. or Proveli LLC, and I also gave them the, the minutes from the council meeting for Bioconvergence. I mean, I think those were really the two that that you would really have to think about, which is why I provided the, the minutes and I also made sure I touched base with the employer to make sure there wasn't something going on that that would have been controversial or, or cause any reason for concern.
Counselor Iverson?
I do just wanna comment that I really enjoyed reading those minutes because it's Jeff McKim, Cheryl Munson and Ryan Cobine going back and forth. It's just like a, a window into the not so distant past. So thank you for bringing them. We should have more historical minutes as uh reading for the package.
Well, I, and I also appreciate that being dis- distributed, just so we don't have to continue to rehash the same story. Do you wanna vote on this tonight? Is that?
I, I, you, I would prefer you voted on it tonight. If you don't vote it on tonight, it gives, they're, they're approved automatically. I, I, you, I would prefer you voted on it tonight. If you don't vote it on tonight, it gives, they're, they're approved automatically because they're forty five day window will, will run.
Okay, so we would need a motion, but, um, I, what?
Didn't do my.
Well, that's true, but I also want to, um, bundle, I want to remove one of the, um, properties to vote on it separately. Um, so if we could remove Eco Logic and do that one separately, simply because my daughter works for that company, that would be great.
How about this? How about I do a motion with the, and then I'll do a second with Eco Logic and move it to change it. Now, let's see if I can do this on the fly. Here we go. Twice one night. I would like to open, counsel, I'd like to open for review and consideration the approval of, uh, resolution twenty twenty three dash eighteen establishing twenty twenty three tax abatement compliance forms. And specifically, I would like to go ahead and move and approve the following entities in this process. Bioconvergence, Proveli LLC, G L C Bloomington, Phoenix closures.
Uh, second. So just to clarify, we, we are uh, dead in Lazarus LLC. Do we need to include that separately or does it?
Did I mention?
It's.
I mean, I know that's sort of part of.
It's all the parts. Yeah, it's part of Phoenix closures, but.
Yeah.
And Lazarus LLC by implication.
Yes.
Yeah. And you seconded it?
Yes.
Did it? Okay. Is there any more further discussion on these? All right, any public comments? Seeing none, we can do a voice vote on this, I believe. Oh, no, we have one person. Oh, but she's gone, gone. So we can do a voice vote, right? All right, all in favor of approving the, um, above named, uh, organizations for tax abatement compliance, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And then we need a second one, please.
What's that?
I mean, yes.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to prove as part of the resolution for twenty twenty three dash eighteen establishing twenty twenty three tax payment compliance forms on its own Ecologic LLC.
Second.
So any discussion? My only discussion, I already established, I have a possible perceived conflict, I guess. So I'm going to pass on this vote. Um, so that means we have to do a roll call vote. Apologies for that, but if we could do that, that'd be great.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Pass. Sorry.
Thank you.
Counselor Wells, pass.
Thank you now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
We have another item, item eleven.
Counsel, I move to approve the health department's request in fund eight one zero four nine six two three. Public health emergency preparedness for a category transfer of three thousand five hundred and sixty three dollars from the personnel category and one thousand two hundred and twenty five dollars from the services category for a total of four thousand seven hundred and eighty eight dollars to the services category.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Kelly. Thank you for your patience this evening.
Of course. Good evening. Um, so this is just a pretty simple request. The grant cycle is coming to an end. So we are requesting that we can transfer some of those funds into the supply category. So we can make purchases, um, to utilize those funds rather than returning them to the state, um, before the end of the cycle.
That's sound straightforward. Are there, um, any questions or comments from counsel? No. Awesome. Any public comment on this item? I see none. Um, so we could do a voice vote on this. Nope.
Before we get to the vote, um, on the motion, I, I think Katz has counsel deckard, um, saying services instead of supplies. And that's what both Ms. Gregory and I had heard. Um, so I, I think it's supposed to be supplies instead of services. Sorry.
Thought you were getting perfection tonight. No, I gratefully amend my motion to save the supplies category.
Thank you.
Somebody want a second? Thank you.
All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. Um, now we will have a voice vote on the amended um, motion. All in favor of the health department's request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Um, wow. We are still going strong with item eleven. I mean, twelve.
I'll take it.
I'd like to open for discussion, review the draft resolution in the packet designating Monroe County as a vote center county.
Second.
Um, Ms. Turner King, could you help us out with this one?
So in order for, if, if Monroe County wanted to transition from a precinct pole county to a vote center, there's a process. And the election, the state election division outlines that process as a seven step process, although I think it really is six because the seventh step is track results. Um, the first step in, uh, in that process is to basically gauge interest. So the commissioners and the council would pass a resolution that says we're interested in exploring the option of becoming a vote center county. I do believe that the commissioners have a very similar resolution on their agenda for tomorrow. And the election board has, um, on their meeting for, I think it's July, July sixth, a discussion point, um, of vote centers. And what would happen af- if both the commissioners and the council passes these resolutions gauging interest in exploring the option that enables the election board or that enables a steering committee to begin investigating or looking into the options of becoming a vote center county. The steering committee would develop a vote center plan. That plan would then have to go to the election board for unanimous consent. And if the plan gets unanimous consent, then it would come back to the commissioners and the council for approval prior to going to the state for approval. So I drafted a resolution that basically gets this process going, um, for consideration. And I can put the resolution up on, um, I can share it if you'd like.
That'd be great.
It is in the packet.
Um, any questions, Counsel Iverson?
Uh, this question is, uh, for Molly. Um, how many, are, are we, are we the first county to do this or are there others?
I think that almost two thirds of Indiana are vote center counties. I think sixty seven of the ninety is, um, the number that I remember without looking.
Thank you.
Mr. Deckard?
What, one area, and I, I have a lot of comments on this, um, by pass vocation. But one of the things that as I'm reading the resolution, the way I read the resolution that's prepared, this body would vote and then we are done voting on it. And, um, I, 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 for that reason, I, I don't think we should vote on this tonight. That's just my opinion. There are some things though, that I would kind of like to talk about a little bit. And that is, um, saying a county is a vote center county is a very popular thing. In fact, we've all heard from constituents about that. However, saying you're a vote center county can mean any number of things. And let me use an exercise equivalent. It's akin to saying if I'm starting an exercise plan and that exercise plan includes that you're gonna lay on your couch and eat crescent donuts all day, which would be fun, right? Uh, but not necessarily what some people define that exercise plan. Or the range on the exercise plan could include you are running every two and a half hours and doing all the things they say you're supposed to do or not do. Um, and that range is huge under Indiana law. And what I mean by that with the votes during county is counties can radically, I don't like that word radical, but they can dramatically shift the number of voting locations that they have. Uh, they can keep the same. Uh, they theoretically could increase, but often they don't because, um, vote centers by centering theoretically that you're, 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 you're centering on an area or areas. What I would love to hear from the election board is their philosophy on what this means. So what, if they're looking at locations in the community, and I'm going to take Council Munson's area. She comes from the Kirksville area. She serves for her time or two. Um, what would the vote center county vote center plan, they contemplate, what would that mean for residents of Kirksville? Elsville, Bloomington. If I live in Bloomington, is it going to be law dramatically longer for me to get to a poll site? Now, I don't expect the elec- election board, they're watching, they're probably like, oh, Deckard's at it again. I don't expect them to have all those answers, but I would like to hear them articulate philosophies and all that. Like, what does that mean to them? And the reason I say that, when I spent time as co-director of the state election division, when this law was enacted, some counties went to bare minimums and some had lines and issues. Some counties planned well and they still had surprises. I want to always make sure we are doing everything we can to guarantee reasonable suffrage. If I were given, I mean, we have to do that. And if I were given my druthers on this and I'm not in charge of this and I defer to the wisdom of the clerk and the election board, because that's their duty. But if I were given my druthers, I would want to ensure that people had very reasonable plentiful places to vote on election day and early voting. I would also want to make sure that the convenience of being able to vote where near to where you're working, perhaps if you're coming into town or in your home location is not such a stretch. What I would not want to have happen is any voter who are driving twenty to twenty five minutes to a polling location. And, uh, those can become impending barriers. Now, I'd love to hear their philosophy on this and their thoughts, and I'm sure they have many. But I think that that's important for us and probably the commissioners, although I don't speak for them, in getting that kind of mentality. Cause a, a nuances matter in some of us as they would develop.
Well said. Thank you. Any other comments on this or questions? Yes.
I don't know. This is for Ms. King. Um, do you have an idea? Cause I was trying to go on the Secretary of State's website and kind of do some research. How long does something like this take?
So I've been looking at quite a few counties' vote plans, um, and how they differ. Uh, I think on average, it's about twelve to eighteen months, but what a lot of the counties have articulated that have become vote centers is it really depends on the diversity of your steering committee hoops on your steering committee, how often your steering committee, committee can meet. Um, and so I would say on average twelve to eighteen months, but it can vary greatly.
Okay.
Because we have the presidential. Presidential election that's coming up next year. And I think that's my concern is are we going to be spinning in circles and we're still not going to get ready or be ready, like have something like this be ready for, uh, next election cycle?
That would be, got it.
And I would also point out one factor that might determine how long our process would take is we have a vacant election supervisor position right now. Um, they're currently preparing for a, what was originally a city election, but now is going to be a county election because there's a refer, a school board referendum. Um, and so those factors might take, um, play into our timeline. I did want to add, there was another step that I inadvertently missed in the whole election process, which is a public hearing session. And so before any plan can be approved and put into place, there would be public hearings on these.
Counsel Munson?
And the, the final approval would come from the election board? Is that correct?
I think from my understanding of the process, the election board would unanimously approve it and then it would go back to commissioners and council. And, um, Mr. Cockrell and I have gone back and forth on this and I think he would agree. But ultimately the final, final approval would come from the state because it has to be submitted to the state election division.
So despite the wording that kind of implies, um, it's resolved by the Monroe County Council that Monroe County is approved to operate as a vote center county upon the required approval and filing of the county vote center plan. We would still need to approve such plan.
I believe so. And if you I, I think this is a discussion item and it's not on the, uh, agenda tonight for a vote. And I'm happy to follow up with the election division to make sure that my understanding of the process is correct. And that would also give you or me the opportunity to convey your concerns to the election board meeting because I'll be in attendance on July sixth and I can help prompt that conversation.
That sounds prudent. I like that. Um, because I think um, the idea of a vote center county is, um, attractive, right? And, um, I would be concerned if it was something that somehow made it more difficult for someone to vote in any way.
So it'd be helpful for council. So the election board meeting is not until July sixth. I have obtained sample vote center plans from several counties. Would you like to see a vote center plan to kind of get an idea of what goes into the plan to see if you have additional questions?
Would you maybe create a folder on Dropbox and just put whatever you have in there?
I can do that.
That would be awesome. Thank you. Oh. Commissioner Giffens?
Oh, thank you. Um, it was my understanding coming into this that there has to be some recommendation or request. Not quite sure how it should be phrased from both the county commissioners and the county council indicating that we would like to at least have this pursued. So perhaps some change in the wording of what is for you would accommodate that. Um, but I defer to, to counsel on that.
Okay.
I'm happy to amend the resolution. I will say this is the, um, template sample resolution provided by the election division, the state election division.
Uh, got it. So it, and you said it mirrors what the commissioners are gonna see tomorrow. Okay. Um, and is, there's no particular reason why we would need to speed up on voting for this today or anything?
I don't think a steering committee can be formed until both the resolution is passed by the commissioners or the council. Um, but I mean, if we, this can be reconsidered at the Jul- July eleventh meeting and that gives me time to contact the state division and to hear thoughts from the election board.
I, I think that seems like a good idea. Um, and this is on our agenda just as a discussion.
I, I agree, especially after hearing council member Deckard speak. That was very persuasive.
It was. It was, it was. All right.
One thing I, I just want to add, the positives, if we get this right, you can vote anywhere. At one of those locations. If we get it wrong, it's like that exercise analogy. So I appreciate counsel moving the part of it, you know? It's tough not to crack.
Well, if I understand that potential, the, a potential positive is the votes that currently frequently are thrown out because they can't be fully verified would have a better chance of being counted. Okay. And so that's, that's the intriguing, attractive part of this. Got it.
Yep. Um, I think Commissioner Giffens has, that remind her hand.
Well, no, I was just going to say the same thing, that it really, uh, addresses the issues related to provisional ballots. And I don't have the number in my head, but I know that there were in several, um, last that were at issue. Um, I've also painfully, uh, because of my own personal experience, not because of what happened. But I watched Morgan County go from um, traditional polling places in twenty sixteen to vote centers in twenty eighteen. And it was absolutely seamless in terms of what they did. They were so, so very good about alerting their residents. They were so, so very good about alerting their residents early on about where those vote centers were for both the primary and the general elections. They sent out postcards, they had postcards that went, were available at the county fair. They did all kinds of things to make that acceptable to the residents. And uh standing up there in Morgan County in twenty eighteen, it really, really went well.
Maybe that's one of the samples we can look at. Thank you. That, I think, concludes that discussion. There's no more. Well, hello. You've been quiet.
Oh, no, my, my question is about the next item.
All right, let's move to the next.
I support those centers.
I would like to open for review and consideration the draft resolution creating a sample.
Second, but I was going to ask if if this is really time urgent to have this discussion right now because it's, we've now had more than a four-hour meeting. I think both thirteen and fourteen personally, I would like to see those continued uh to a future time and fifteen for that matter, continue to a future time.
If I may add to um Councilmember McKim's point, we are anticipating a response to the drafts um inter local, yeah, draft inter local that was proposed to city council, and we just have not received that from city administration yet. So I think what I included in the packet was the original draft with no edits. But I envision that the city is going to send us something back that says something different. It, we were going to get it Friday and then um city administration had some things that came up. And so they said it was forthcoming this week, we just haven't received it before today's meeting.
So, and also the way um the item on the agenda is worded, it's, it's about, because the resolution was about more of the MOU, the inter local agreement, not the creation of the CIB. So the creation of CIB is a commissioner's issue. And my intent on putting this um out there was not actually to approve it or anything. It was simply to give you an update that that there had been a presentation at a work session for the city council. They had some questions and suggestions and were the um administration attended as well and had um a desire to make some comments on it. So that's what's, that's what we're waiting on there. Although the commissioners, I do not think um are waiting on that as they're proceeding forward.
I think what's on the agenda for the commissioners meeting tomorrow is the ordinance that establishes this um, the CIB. Not the inter local. So um, I yeah, I think if council members have comments or concerns, they can individually send them to me and then I can compile from there.
Yeah, I mean, there's that, they're two steps, two separate processes. So um, yeah, that's, it's really kind of, that's all I wanted to say about that.
There's no need to continue it because it's been.
Right, unless we have an update. And yeah, there's no need to continue is my point. Sorry.
The important point is that we are moving along.
Yes, yes, indeed.
We all need to pay attention to it.
Yep.
And I believe Commissioner Giffens has a comment just for Commissioner Giffens.
Yeah, I just, I, for me, I just like to get the temperature of the council on the CIB. This, that's what this was about. It wasn't about the inter local today. We will be discussing the CIB tomorrow during the commissioners' work session. Um, and it will be on our, hopefully, if things go well, on our actual agenda uh the first week of July. But like I said, I just would like to get your temperature on this with the actual CIB. Uh, we expected the some, some input from the mayor's office um a week and a half ago, not last Friday, but the Friday before. And so it's been very slow in coming. But as I've been out in talking to uh downtown Bloomington Inc. folks uh to the Capitol the, the, I'm sorry, the convention um center board kind of things. People are really excited that we're ready to move forward. So um just like to hear what, what kind of um thoughts you have on just the CIB.
Counsel, I move, we express strong support for the uh commissioners moving forward and creating a CIB.
Second.
Discussion, comments, questions? No? All right.
Kudos to Kate Wiltz and Sue Scambalary for doing this. Well done. With the commissioners, of course.
All in favor?
We have a couple of hands.
All right, public comment on this, please.
There goes my.
I know.
So much for that. I'm sorry, I can't see.
I am gonna move to continue the next item, by the way.
So, but I think the first, I'm just gonna go down the list. And I believe the first hand I see raised is Mr. Eric Spoonmore.
Unmute him, give me one moment.
Okay. Are we able to hear from? Um, are we just still having some technical issues? That's what's happening? Let's have it.
Yeah, it's just one moment. So sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, can, can everybody hear me now?
Hello, yes, welcome, Mr. Spoonmore.
Well, thank you, counsel, and I I won't take too long tonight. Um, first, before I talk about the capital improvement board, um, I I did want to say that the Chamber of Commerce, and this is Eric Spoonmore, uh president, CEO of Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce stands uh with our law enforcement officers. Uh, very sad to see um the violent behavior and violent acts that were committed against a Monroe County Sheriff's Deputy uh over the weekend. And I just want to get on record and say that the business community stands behind our law enforcement uh officers and um was very, very sad to see that happen. That was a very unfortunate incident. Moving on to the CIB, we appreciate all of the work that the county council, the city council, the county commissioners have put in to getting this agreement in place. We fully support the Capital Improvement Board as the best, most ideal mechanism of moving forward with the convention center expansion. Something that I know that you all feel is very important uh to the economic development and continued vitality of our community. And so thank you for that. Uh, strongly encourage you all to support that. And uh look forward to all the future developments with the convention center expansion. We have such an exciting opportunity on our hands here, and you all have been instrumental to making that happen. So please do charge ahead, full speed ahead on this uh capital improvement board with the inter local agreement. Uh, we appreciate all the work that you've done on this and look forward to everything to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The other public comment was from Mr. Jim Shelton, but he, his hand has since been lowered. So I'm not sure if Mr. Shelton still would like to comment.
All right then. Um, it's up again. There we go. Mr. Shelton.
Just really briefly, I did not know uh Mr. Spoonmore was gonna comment. I strongly agree with Mr. McKim's uh strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We had a motion. And it was that we expressed strong support for the creation of CIB. And now we are all going to have a voice vote and all in favor of doing that, not the voice vote, the motion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed? And there you have it. Marty Hawk has her hand raised. Marty?
Right, I didn't get that quick enough, did I? Can you hear me?
I I didn't see it quick enough. Did you?
I just wanted to support this as well. It took me a while to try and get my laptop opened and anyway.
That's great. I appreciate it. I didn't realize you were even on. So that's um good to hear you.
Not only that, I didn't have a ticket when I got out there, so.
Well, that's.
If we missed it, uh, if we, if we.
Do you want, would you, would you like to, to, do we want to do a roll call vote so that you're, you're on record?
Well, I I have to, let's say if it's gonna count, I have to be seen somehow, right?
You please promote Marty Hawk to a panelist. Okay. Looking, there she is. Okay. And now we can see you, and that means you can vote with us. Um, I would like to ceremoniously ask for a roll call vote on that last motion.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Yay.
Thank you. All right. I believe that the other hand that's raised is a legacy hand. So moving back to our agenda, the next item, which has been suggested that we table, I would need to defer and ask a question about. So our next item is uh the review and discussion of council office job descriptions. We have drafts for two positions. An existing one um that's just being revised to reflect current duties and a new position in the office. So let's just open for discussion briefly with Molly, if we can, um, to find out the time sensitivity of this, please.
The next PAC meeting, um, where these, the amendments, these job discretion, descriptions and the creation of the new job description is July eleventh with a deadline of July's, July third. And so if we table the discussion on these items tonight, it would not be able to go to the July PAC meeting. They do have a meeting in August, so.
Well, I know it was my intention to have these at the July PAC meeting. They're I don't think they're all that complicated, but they're meant to accompany an a reorganization. So shall we discuss or is there a motion to not discuss?
I think we're, we're already amidst, what's one more for the road here?
Can we try that? I'm gonna make my, I'm gonna uh try anyway. Counsel, I move, we table or postpone item number fourteen.
Okay, I think that we've had the arguments uh and our facts presented on why and why not table. Um, I will say that we have a position that's being filled temporarily and which make, means essentially we have an open position right now in our office. And um moving this along, I think would help get some stability in our office. And I'd like to do it sooner rather than later. Are there any other comments?
All right, well, I didn't get a second, so.
Oh, did you need a second to table? It's late in the evening, folks. Do you think you're at your best right now to make these, this discussion?
I know I'm not. That's why I made that motion, but. Go ahead.
I think this week has shown why we should have this conversation right now. Because with two people gone out of our office, we really have relied on one person. And I think there's, there's so much going on with, with all these. I think that 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 really underscores this, and I'd like to see this in PAC sooner rather than later. That's my, that's my opinion.
The alternative compromise solution that I just thought of um is we have a July eleventh PAC meeting. There's nothing that says PAC, or we have, yeah, we have a July eleventh PAC meeting. You could still have a discussion of the job descriptions at your July eleventh council meeting. And then if PAC wanted to schedule a second July meeting, they could do so. But that is at the discretion of PAC, so.
I don't really think that I want to rely on PAC maybe not having another meeting. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I think we should discuss it now. But um, I think we should entertain the, you know, the, if, do we need a second? Okay, all right. We have two job descriptions. We're gonna talk about them. And they were in the packet, the full-time job description is for administrative assistant. And um, it was, I think I'm not sure how much we've talked about this, but um I know we have. So pardon me if I repeat myself. We basically wanted to update a job description that we didn't feel was fully reflective of what was being done in, by the person with this job. So we started doing that. And um in the process, we also thought that for a number of reasons, including office efficiency, that we would take the positions currently super two. It's two, it's one and a half positions now. But the, the administrative assistant position or the council administrator position, excuse me, that's currently supervised by the auditor. We would like to, I would like to suggest that in addition to revising the job description, we also look at a reorganization that would bring that position back under the council for supervision. And then in addition, we would be adding a second position that would be under our supervision, which would be the assistant council administrator. At that, my, my intent with that would be that we would no longer than need our ha- half to three-quarter part-time person um, position, shouldn't say person, position. Um, as the new assistant council administrator position would cover the duties currently done by the part-time person as well as some other duties, including assisting with some HR tasks, et cetera. Are there questions?
On both of the job descriptions, or are we doing them one at a time?
Well, let's start with the, the council administrator, just to be efficient.
The tricky part of this is, is moving out of, coming, bringing it back to the council.
Mm-hmm.
I know there was conversation on this at the last PAC meeting. Um, or with the two PAC meetings ago, where there was some concern that bringing it into the council office would be, there would, there would, we would have to merge duties over, back over to the set traduties back over to the auditor. And number two is that it would be um, an undue burden on council to oversee the duties of that person. I don't think that moving such trade duties back over to the auditor is that onerous of a task. So I'm not sure that that's a, a big concern. Um. And I guess the, the second argument is uh, it is something that I think is, is bears conversation that, you know, what, you know, what happens when there's a disciplinary issue? What happens when there's a uh, conduct issue? What happens when there's, you know, go down the list of H R issues? Whose responsibility is that? How does that work, get worked out, yada, yada?
So my understanding is that the day-to-day supervision would fall to the uh, council president. And that bigger concerns, like it's like a performance review type thing, would be the matter for an, an executive session. Um, it's one of the reasons you can hold an executive session, and that is the way we were operating when I started on council. Um. So it's doable. Is it complicated? Because there's seven people who have to then contemplate the supervision of one person. It's delegated, like operationally, day-to-day. Um, but yeah, on the bigger issues, I think it might be good that there are seven people contemplating the performance. Other, that's my answer. Anyway, I mean, others obviously might have other opinions. Other?
Marty has her hand.
Questions, Marty? Yes?
Yes. Um, as you know, I'm a big supporter of moving the duties that uh, are really the auditor's duties back under the auditor and leave them there, because if something goes awry, the auditor has a full staff there that can be cross-trained, and we, the council, should not have this uh, a huge duty on us, because we're part-time. It needs to be over there under a full-time uh, office where there's somebody there all the time. The only reason we have any council staff at all was simply because we had a council attorney that was in our office, and so therefore needed the assistant. Other, other than that, we would have not needed an assistant. And just about all of the duties that is being performed now, uh, that's required. I, uh, it, that the council administrator is doing now is really the auditor's duties. Now, here's what's going to happen. If we say that, that the two people working in physically in the council office, if they don't want to be under the county auditor, and the auditor is going to take all those responsibilities back, you know, doing the agenda, doing the salary ordinance, is doing, you know, budgeting and all the things that really she, uh, the auditor, the elected official, oh, has the responsibility to do. Then they're going to actually have to have more people to get these duties done. You know, you can't expect the people to just do all these duties. But they'll all be working overtime. So that really means that, that what the council's asking for is two full-time people that are not budgeted.
Um.
Because.
I, I respectfully disagree. I think we, we're, the duties that, that are statutory um, for the auditor's office are, we've talked about with the auditor, and she wa- she wants them back under her. And feels like she has staff to do that. I can defer to Bree, you know, if you've got comments on that, because the auditor is not with us this evening.
I have no comment.
She has no comments. I can't get in the middle. Fair enough. Um, but I, but part of the, the reasoning behind moving it, moving the position of the council administrator under us is that there were a lot of duties that this, this job was responsible for, including administering the Sophia Travis Grants um, program that the auditor is not responsible for doing and did not want to supervise. So, or, I don't know, I might be putting words in her mouth when I say did not want to supervise, but she didn't want this position to be doing that job. She thought it would be taking away from what um, what the other duties were that are statutory. So there, I think that the, the job, the duties have grown over the years, and um, we have a lot more um, council business that's not necessarily the purview of the auditor, including the, the J F A C and um, those administrative duties, as well as um, I think we ask a lot more questions. I, I, you know, we, we demand a lot of our council administrator. And um.
Would I like to just suggest that if you take away all of the duties that she's doing, that, you know, the big salary ordinances and, and everything having to do with agenda and everything, which in any other county, that's under the auditor. But if you do that, then tell me how we need another full-time person to help her go do Sophia Travis or whatever other committees that there are. Um, I just, I mean, fiscally, I think it's not the responsible thing to do. Uh, i- if you folks are going, you know, determined to do it, you'll do it, but uh, right now, the only job really that was vacant was the one that was, you know, that the person left a month ago, or whenever that was. And so that was really the only job that was full-time that was available. And that is a job that is under the auditor. So if you put somebody else in there is full-time doing something else, that is, you're asking for a full-time position.
So the, the job that's, that's vacant, or was vacant, that you were ta- talking about is still under the auditor and is remaining under the auditor and is fulfilling the statutory duties of the auditor for the council. I think that's the purpose of that position, as far as I understand.
Uh, and, you know, to, to the question that Councilmember Hawk asked is why do we need the second job description that's on the agenda? And I, I think the answer is really simple. It's to make sure that we have someone that knows how to do the work. So we were in a situation not too long ago where the council administrator was working through vacations. They were working through all sorts of, of different times, incredibly stressed out. And, and it was, is becoming an issue, and bringing in an assistant council administrator means that, that the uh, council administrator can not only take vacation days, but can also have assistance in doing the work and have someone that knows how to do the job in the event that they are unable to do so.
Yeah.
In my, that's the answer.
And it's a.
This work. She was doing the auditor's work when she was putting in all those extra hours. And I'm not finding fault with the auditor. I'm not finding fault with the administrator. I'm just saying this is how we grow county government expenses. And then we think, well, we can't understand why there's no money. There you go.
We are adding a half of an F T, because, and you know, essentially, if you consider our part-time line as a half, that's what we would be doing, because we wouldn't be backfilling the part-time position that we currently have. So we'd be creating that full-time, and there are job duties that are officially within the Employment Services Department. I believe that's what we call H R in the county, and the, there are, that is included. There are some things from that department that this person would be um, trained to do and available to support. And I just didn't think it was worth getting all particular about whether the, the percentage of that salary came from that department versus just funding the position in, in county council office. And uh, our attorney is raising her hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to do a point of clarification, I suppose. Um. The auditor has the budgetary responsibilities, but the salary ordinance is a council responsibility, so the job description does reference the salary ordinance, because that is a council responsibility.
Yes, that, thank you.
Um, we can disagree on that. Uh, preparing it is not our responsibility.
I will say we also just confirmed that, that with the auditor, and she was in agreement.
Thank you.
Hey, folks, you guys go do what you're gonna do. I'm not gonna keep you any longer.
Well, one thing, if I may, Madam President, no, we're not monolithic here, there, or anywhere. We have different opinions on a lot of things, and I'll say this. Since being on this council since January 2019, I've observed the following. We ask more and more questions, more and more demands. We come up with things like, well, we've got a retention bonus, and we got to figure it out, and we all watched that last fall. That, by the way, I'd love to say that in a year and a half, two years, those details will not be there, where that need won't be there, but they will be there. Every one of us may be replaced by counselors. They expect, ask for more, and want more detail. I see the professionalism of the way this has got to be, not in conflict with the professionalism of the auditor and her great staff. But I see it as this is a necessary outgrowth of part of that, and you all know it, and I'm, I'm gonna be real candid. Every counselor here has nine million questions, please. I've watched every one of you make. And not any of those are yes, no, fill in the blank. We're talking about comprehensive questions. We today on our agenda, if you look at the interaction between county and city alone, and today's a good day for interaction between county and city, that is voluminous. In 10 to 20 years, hopefully I'm not here to see it. It will be a lot more work. And as far as, you know, council supervision or not, I, I'm number two, two, to President Wiltz, and she's out working me nine tight ten. But I have to tell you, the hours that I spend in a day watching her work alone, and that's just the ones I'm seeing. It's not like she's not doing that in a pretty regular amount. Um, I just, I, I, I don't see the questions going away, and I know you all won't have a feelaway, because you're good at your jobs. But I, I, I uh, I see this as kind of reality of where things are, plus the demands when we get to budgets, and nobody wants a mistake during budgets. Not one person wants a mistake. What's late now will be awful then. Um, so anyway, I offer that passion to it, because it, it frankly, friends, it is what it is.
Thank you. That was much more articulate than I could be at this hour. Um. Are there other comments or questions? Yes?
I have uh, had the experience of being a council member under a number of different uh, styles of um, work in the council office. And I have to say that the current uh, the current arrangement is more productive and better serves the council and the people of Monroe County than anything we've had previously. So I would like to see that continue under the uh, under the supervision of the council itself.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Yes, Miss Kate Turner King?
Sorry. Not that I want to draw this discussion out, but if we're moving, are you still talking about the council administrator? Or have we moved on to the full-time position? Or are we talking about both?
That's a very good question, because it's very hard to talk about one without the other. Um, we were officially discussing the council administrator. Um, but now let's, because there, it's all one item.
Yeah.
Um. We can certainly, if you have questions or concerns about the other one.
And I have a suggestion. So the new, of the um, assistant position is all new. Um. I have been talking with Ms. Mosher, who has been fulfilling the duties of J F A C. And in that job description, there isn't anything J F A C related. But I don't know that what Ms. Mosher has been doing for J F A C is reflected in the job description, so I'm going to share my screen, and I would like to add this paragraph to the existing job description in the packet.
And to clarify, Ms. Mosher is, or she's doing every job in the office right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in the sentence, I didn't reference J F A C specifically. I just said justice-related committees, because J F A C may, may sunset. It's written to the resolution. C J R C might come back. A new justice-related committee could form. So I didn't want to tie it down specifically, but I did want it to be just as focused.
So that seems fine, but it also would apply to pretty much any council-related committees, right?
It, it does. I just think the difference between this and other committees is um, the thinking of J F A C specifically is the preparation of reports, which I don't think happens with other committees, and the amount of research and scheduling that happens.
And then, to me, it's like, yes, you can call that out, but that might come up under another topic at some point in the future as well, so. Um.
That all looks fine to me. It all looks true as well, so.
Yeah.
I, I'm okay with that language.
Okay, enough to make a motion?
So I would, I would suggest that uh, the word justice in the, in the first sentence of that page just be deleted and, and substitute uh, for council-related committees. And then you've covered everything.
Counsel, I move to include the clause on the screen in the assistant council administrator uh, position description.
Second.
I think you can do a voice vote.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Um, so I think I would.
No, unfortunately, we can't do a voice vote, because we have a participant who's.
Oh, I forgot. Oh, oh, sorry. Cause her, we need to do a roll call.
I'll get off of here. You guys, guys go do whatever you're gonna do, because I don't support this. So why drag it out for you? No point. You haven't paid the price for it. I could be out of leave. Good luck.
Okay, I'm not sure what that. I think she's gone. Okay. Voice vote stands. Um. I would entertain a motion that would enable me or my proxy to present these positions and a reorganization as described to PAC um, at their July meeting.
I would do the, give the president the authority to represent these positions to PAC and these descriptions, or reduce the process. Second.
All right, uh, voice votes? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And um, does anyone have any council comments?
I'd a lot say about car ethanol, but I'm not going to.
I do.
Please.
It's gonna be very short. I just want to recognize that uh, there were nine people in Indian Creek Township Sunday night that had severe property damage and lost structures. And uh, this was, this was classified as an EF1 tornado. And whether it's one or five, when it hits your place, it's, it's really hard. So our emergency management uh, team has, has worked very hard, and they have worked with, with federal. authorities to get them help.
Well, I'm glad that they're getting assistance, and I'm sure that was terrifying. I know that people all over the county were were terrified, hunkered down. Trying to ride that one out. Best of luck to them. Any others? Okay, I thank you all for a very long meeting and I appreciate you, and I promise not to call you for at least a day and a half. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Five, nine people all do this. You all owe me a seven AM.
Six thirty is rough. I do seven. Oh, I.